This is 6:32 PM. It is Monday, February 22, 2021. This is the regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting. Let's get started as always with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, public participation. I'll move over to the attendees and see if we have any raised hands. Mr. Sherry. You have the floor.
Yes, so hearing, at least not at the start of the meeting, whether there's going to be any alterations to the agenda, that sometimes is important to let people know that so they can decide what they're going to use opening comment to talk about. I'm going to sort of proceed with the idea that there have been no alterations to the agenda, at least for the past couple of days. To that end, this tonight gives me the opportunity, by my count, to speak on four separate occasions, first being now, second being after a nomination is apparently put forward, as well as a motion for censure that seems to be on the agenda, as well as final public participation. So I'll just sort of go in order in terms of that. I note tonight that the board is planning on considering the nomination of John Nagel for a governmental position, which really surprises me more than a little bit, especially because it appears on the same agenda as a motion to censure, and here's why. This board did not elect John Nagel to the Board of Commissioners. That was decided by the residents of the Fifth Ward, and they did so, apparently on more than one occasion. However, John Nagel's behavior on the board is something that is known to the board. I'll try to give sort of a synopsis of three particular events that involve John Nagel that this board might want to consider, and which I'll probably bring up again when John Nagel's name is formally put forward. Before John Nagel actually got onto the Board of Commissioners, he had an incident where he appeared at a meeting as a member of the audience and shouted an obscenity at a speaker, that speaker being me. As a result of that, John Nagel publicly apologized to the entire township for losing control, with the exception of me, which he specifically did not apologize in that public statement. That is the type of man John Nagel was revealed to be before he got on the board. Now, after he got on the board, John Nagel had two occurrences that I believe deserve some mention tonight. First is, is when he lost the control and screamed "Shut up" at a fellow commissioner, that being Rich Booker. The next meeting after that shut up outburst, John Nagel apologized to Commissioner Booker, but nevertheless, in the same meeting called for a resident to be shot, that person being me. The Board of Commissioners, incidentally, in reaction to John Nagel's behavior, voted 6-0 to condemn him, but did not actually formally censure him. That failed in a 3-3 vote. I'm bringing that forward because, for reasons presently mysterious to me, a motion to censure appears tonight. So just make it part of the record, John Nagel, despite telling a resident that he should be shot at a public meeting, that did not actually get a passed censure vote. The last John Nagel event that I'd like to speak to now, and we'll come back to in apparently a couple of minutes, is towards the tail end of John Nagel's fairly regrettable tenure on the board, when he appeared at a sentencing hearing in which the disgusting, admitted criminal pervert Phil R. was being federally sentenced. As was reported in the press, John Nagel exclaimed from the audience, "I think he's being treated so unfairly." Now, John Nagel said that when he was still a Radnor Commissioner, and yet this board did not censure him or remove him from office. That board included, among other people, Jack Larkin and others. I think the only person who wasn't at the meeting when that behavior of John Nagel was being considered was Lisa Borowski. I'll take a look at the news article to confirm that, but I believe that to be true. Why would this board even think about putting somebody like John Nagel back in government in Radnor Township is astonishing to me. There are so many other options, including people who are untainted by the repeated scandals that marred Nagel's time in office, and also are relatively new to the governmental process. So accordingly, it is very, very strange that this individual would be put forward, and I think if a certain motion to censure is not voluntarily pulled, an examination will be performed tonight as to what type of behavior this board, including its current president, has allowed to go forward without censure, and what behavior is apparently being considered for censure. And while I do that, I'm going to take a look at a certain webpage that I'm really having problems posting on.
Thank you, Mr. Sherry. We are done with five minutes. Are there any other public comments?
Jack.
Mr. Kraus.
No, sorry. With this public comment, you have to give people a warning.
Public comment, Rich. Ms. Kraus Blackney, I think that your hand is raised.
Yes, thank you. I'm Barbara Kraus Blackney. I live in the 200 block of Walnut Avenue in Wayne, and I wanted to comment on two items on the agenda tonight that I see as related one another. One is, assuming they're in, there still is the agenda yesterday, item D, Stormwater Management Waiver Request, and then item G, the motion to direct our solicitor to attend the zoning board meeting in support of the application on file by Concordia Group. I'm certainly very concerned about stormwater management in the township, and in Wayne in particular, and in North Wayne in particular, in our neighborhood. So I really would request that any waiver be very seriously considered for rejection, quite frankly, because I think the, all these waivers add up and contribute to the ongoing problem that we have. And I am surprised that the township would be moving at this early juncture to support the zoning application of Concordia Group, because there's quite a bit of neighborhood discussion about it. Many, many neighbors would like to see the current proposal revised to support R1 zoning and not R2, and it's a long discussion that I assumed we would have time to speak to more in detail at another meeting, but I did see this on the agenda for tonight, so I wanted to comment now in advance that some of us would like an answer as to why the township would already be on record as wanting to attend the zoning board to support this proposal at this time. And thank you very much for listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment? Mr. Marshall.
Yes, hello. My name is Matthew Marshall, 228 Walnut Avenue. I believe I was eight years on the Planning Commission, held the role of Vice Chair, and then I became interim Commissioner with some of you who are sitting on the board. I guess my question to the board is, we're looking at a 20-acre redevelopment at the Eastern Lot, which is the First Ward. We've been notified through mostly public meeting, including last Monday's Planning Commission, that this board is moving through what I would call a very rapid pace of not only getting a zoning change done from plan institutional to R2 zoning, but getting a preliminary and final approval from the Planning Commission, which will then go to your board. I guess two points I'd like to make. One, this application has probably, from my experience on the Planning Commission, more implications for the township at a much greater scale than I can remember, since maybe the Penn Medicine application that was, was done, I think, was finished sometime around 2018. The other, the other thing I wanted to point out is that through all of the considerations that this board needs to make regarding a zoning change, and then furthermore asking your solicitor to vote before the zoning board, you are, you are also taking this process very rapidly, and it never went before the Community Development Subcommittee, which I believe Mr. Booker, Ms. Maroni, and Mr. Larkin are all part of. That step, that very important step was missed during this application. If I recall, the last time that board met was back in July, when the post office annex was being debated, and many good suggestions had come from the community as to how that development should have been handled. I would just take it upon the board to ask the question, why was the Eastern Lot redevelopment never brought before the Community Development Subcommittee? Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like Ms. Ellis. Ms. Ellis. Lynn Ellis, you have your hand raised, and I've asked you to unmute. If you can hear me, now's the time. Okay, we're going to move on, but there's going to be other opportunities, so we look forward to hearing from you then. Okay, moving to the consent agenda. Are there any consent items that any of the Commissioners would like to pull? Hearing none, I will move for the consent agenda. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Consent agenda passes unanimously. I'm sorry, Sean, are you saying, give me a sec. I'm seeing people. Give me a second. I'm seeing that you guys can't unmute yourselves. I'm going to try and fix that.
Jack, I'm, I'm wondering if Lynn couldn't unmute herself. That's why maybe she didn't speak.
Yeah, can we go back to that comment period?
I'm happy to, but there's different settings for panelists and attendees. So I'm happy to ask Ms. Ellis, if you want to, I'm going to see if I can allow you to talk again. If we want to go back and give you another try, otherwise, I'm going to go back and do the consent agenda request again and see if there's any items to pull off.
Also, Roberto Winters wanted to speak as well. She sent me an email.
She is a attendee and does not have her hand up. She's welcome to give a comment, though.
And the other thing, Commissioner Larkin, if, if someone does run over, just a hard stop them, maybe you should give them a little bit of warning or kind of have them wrap it up, but the hard stop in someone's, when they're in mid-sentence, I just think is, sends a wrong message.
Yeah, we must give them a warning and an opportunity to wrap.
I'm perfectly happy to do that. Ordinarily, as you know, I do. Mr. Sherry has repeatedly complained when I do that, so in this instance, I did not.
I mean.
And I won for Mr. Sherry in the future, since he's asked me not to. If he would like to ask me to, I'd be perfectly happy to go back to that, as I do for everyone else, but as I say, he specifically has asked me not to, so I will not.
I mean.
Back to Sherry's note, let's move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on consent agenda that a Commissioner would like to pull? Hearing none, I will again move for the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Consent agenda passes unanimously. Committee reports, item 3A, GPX 200 South Eiffen Avenue Conditional Use Decision. Solicitor Rice, I think that this is you.
Check.
You had the wrong agenda. This is what I get for having like six of these agendas up at the same time.
You're at the appointment to the zoning hearing board.
Thank you. Give me a moment. Okay, committee reports, item 3A, Resolution Number 2021-26, appointing a member to the Radnor Township Zoning Hearing Board in accordance with the municipality's planning code, John Nagel, alternate position, term ending 12/31/23. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any Commissioner comment?
Let me just start. Yeah, so I'm just going to say that, that Commissioner Nagel, or John Nagel, helped me on my campaign. He also went to my fundraiser. So this is, if this was Parks and Rec, I would feel fine voting for him. This is a quasi judicial position, so it's kind of like electing the closest thing to like a judge. So with that, I, I feel most, most comfortable abstaining, so I will be abstaining. Thank you.
I agree with Mr. Attorney Sherry's assessment. Do not believe John is the appropriate person for this, and his past actions have led me to, to this conclusion.
I'm going to speak in support of Mr. Nagel for this position. I think that his experience with the community, he served on the Board of Commissioners, Parks and Rec. He's currently on the sewer collaborative. I just, I think that his depth of knowledge about our community would be an asset, so he has my vote.
And I'll echo what Commissioner Mulroney stated. I think as we move forward, and especially in looking at some of the things that will be coming for the zoning hearing board, he has the institutional knowledge on many of these, these issues, and I think that he would be an asset to the board.
Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? Mr. Sherry?
Yes, Dan Sherry, for the first time ever appearing at a Radnor meeting via Zoom, ergo, that babbling excuse of Mr. Sherry says, "Don't cut me off," would not really apply to the situation.
Mr. Sherry, we're not using ad hominem attacks. You can go on. Please don't refer to anyone as babbling.
Excuse me, don't mute me again, sir. With respect to Mr. Nagel's position, first and foremost, Commissioner Farre, that was a wise thing for you to do, to abstain from voting due to the conflict. I will note that one of the things I did not bring up when I was speaking about the motion to censure John Nagel for the public display of support at Phil R.'s sentencing hearing failed 3-3. Lisa Borowski was not there that night. You know who was the dispositive vote for 3-3? Nagel himself. Commissioner Farre was apparently not of the belief that Nagel should be censured. That was his vote to cast. Do you know who the president of the Board of Commissioners was at the time, who did not attempt to rule Nagel's vote, which was obviously conflicted out of order? That would be Jack Larkin. So now you have John Nagel, again in a, to use Commissioner Farre's word, quasi judicial authority, who could not see the problem associated with voting on a motion to censure himself. That is the character of John Nagel. If you don't think you have people in this township who are capable of recognizing that they ought not vote on a motion to censure if they themselves are the topic of the censure, I would say the overwhelming majority of people in Radnor Township understand that conflict. Apparently, John Nagel didn't, and board leadership represented by Jack Larkin was fine with that. Why would you continue to perpetuate this man in Radnor Township? What I heard in support of Nagel is, he has a lot of experience. That's right. Accordingly, there's a large associated record with him, as I just discussed. He's yelling "Shut up" at a televised board meeting, something you would want on a quasi judicial board. Thereafter apologizing, and in the same meeting say, "Somebody should be shot in Radnor." Is that the type of person you would want on a quasi judicial board? How about at the Phil R. sentencing hearing? Again, for the people who are perhaps unaware, Phil R. pleaded guilty, pleaded guilty, meaning that there is no excuse as to the process, and yet John Nagel, within earshot of a Philadelphia Inquirer reporter, goes, "I think he's being treated so unfairly." As a result, motion to censure brought forward, because that conduct is inarguably outrageous, and John Nagel, apparently not willing to have confidence that the board would not go forward with it, cast the vote. Just the type of person you'd want to have in a quasi judicial appointment. Please do better for this township. You may think Nagel has experience, but this isn't whether he has experience and can be asked questions by any board member who has questions of him. It's whether you put him in any type of position of authority. In light of his record, it's idiotic and reckless to do so. He doesn't change. Again, what happened at the Phil R. sentencing hearing was at the very end of John Nagel's time at the board. The profanity, the calling to be shot, that's all during the penancy of his time on the board. How many more bites at the apple does he get?
Mr. Sherry, you seem now to want a one-minute warning, so I'm giving you a one-minute warning.
Right. It's good to give warnings. It's also good to establish precedent in terms of, these are not people that we'd want back. Do you know who also has a lot of experience in terms of township managers, township matters, rather? People that are currently either wards of the state, or at least were found guilty. This board wouldn't seriously consider putting Bill Spengler or Phil R. on any type of board, and while John Nagel is not known to have committed any type of crime along those lines, there's nevertheless conduct that should disqualify such individuals ever from being invited back. You now can't use the excuse that it's the Fifth Ward people that are putting them in. It's this board. Have some principles, stand by them, and refuse to vote this man into any type of quasi judicial or any type of advisory setting. There are other options. Thanks.
Is there any additional public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-2 with Commissioner Farhi abstaining. So moving on to item 3B, Resolution Number 2021-32. If someone has that feedback, I'd be grateful if you could turn off your sound. Resolution Number 2021-32, adopting the Renewable Energy and Conservation Plan dated February 2021, prepared by Practical Energy Solutions and assigning implementation to the Township's Green Team to develop priorities and report back to the Board of Commissioners. I will so second, or sorry, I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Do we have somebody on the line who can give us a presentation on this, or some information, some background about this?
We do. Thanks, Mr. President. I'll introduce to the board Mr. Paul Spiegel. He works with Practical Energy Solutions. That's the firm that the board engaged back in 2019 to perform this energy, or put this energy plan together. Paul is with us tonight, and I will let him take it away. Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Bill. Thanks for having us here at the meeting. We developed this plan over the last year and worked closely with the Green Team and the Stakeholders Group as well, and, and we submitted it to the Green Team for review about four to six weeks ago, and made a few modifications, but then presented the plan in a public webinar last Tuesday night, because it's a pretty long plan, pretty involved. There's a lot of recommendations in it, and it was going to bog down the Commissioners' meeting a little bit, so that we, so we made that available. We recorded the webinar and posted it on the township or website. So we're here tonight just to, I guess, support the resolution that's being put before you to vote on, to accept the plan, and engage, engage your Green Team, and work with them closely to prioritize some of the elements of the plan based on the resources that the township has available. We could have put some priorities in, and actually, we did put some priorities in, but they're not necessarily time-based. This plan was in response to a previous resolution to commit to the Sierra Clubs Ready for 100 program, and that involves moving to 100% clean electricity by 2035 and 100% clean energy by 2050. There's a lot of elements to the plan, a lot of recommendations. You're not going to do them all this year, but you also don't want to wait until 2049 to try to do them, or 2034. You want to be chipping away each, each year. So I guess the summary that we had for this is to select someone to take ownership of the plan. If you work with the Green Team, there's a good Stakeholders Group of some of the biggest commercial, institutional, and even some resident, resident groups that were represented on that stakeholder group. So our main recommendations, again, are to have someone take ownership of the plan at the township level, and prepare a budget each year for any of the priority actions that were determined in concert with the Green Team and the Commissioners.
So I absolutely love that this is something that you guys were able to put together by way of previous presentation. I'd be grateful if you could, because this is a public meeting at which there are people who are watching, who probably have not had the chance to go online and watch the presentation, yet if you could just headline for us, what are three examples of actions you would be asking the board to take over the course of the next however many months and years?
Wow. Out of the 111. I'm thinking.
I'm not wedded to three exactly. My point is, I'd like you to give some examples of the things that you are asking the township to do. Are you asking us entirely to switch from fossil fuels to electricity? Are you asking us to entirely get rid of plastic straws? Tell the people at home what it is that you're looking for us to do.
We're definitely looking to move towards electrification so that you can, so that you can power those elements with renewable energy. There's a lot of technology still being developed, but we're looking for the township to take a leadership position and look at their own facilities, and do some, do some upgrades to improve the energy performance and to switch over to electricity so that it can be generated with solar or other clean energy. We're looking for you also to work with the stakeholder groups and allow them, and actually, the Green Team, a place on the township website to post some of the actions that are being taken by others in the community. And so you have big players like Villanova University, and Cabrini, and Eastern, and you have, you know, large businesses like Brandywine Realty, and, and Mainline Health, and other large building owners as well, but you also have churches that are already engaging in some of these plans, and really, the goal is to first try to shrink your energy use by managing your buildings and facilities better, and then to convert to electricity for, for all of the operations. That's also in the long-range plan for vehicles, with electric vehicles, and some of these things can't be implemented today necessarily, but as we were working on the plan, actually, after we presented it the first time a few weeks ago, I think within a couple of days, GM announced that they were switching. I think within a couple of days, GM announced that they were switching completely over to electric vehicle manufacturing by twenty thirty five, which is gonna mean there's a lot of money that'll be invested in research to make those batteries charge faster and last longer. And and as technology changes, you may need to make slight adjustments and things that are recommended in the plan. There may be better opportunities that come up, but for right now we showed a path to getting to the goal by twenty fifty. But it does mean starting now and not going backwards at all.
Sorry, Commissioner, comment?
Do you mind?
Commissioner Borowski?
Thanks. So thank you, Mr. Spiegel. I had the opportunity to hear your presentation the other evening and I was grateful for it and thought it was very well done and thought out. I liked that there were so many pieces in there that I think we could do right away and some that were more definitely long term that we needed to consider. The one thing that did concern me was the idea of and I see that here in the legislation memorandum that you provided us that, you know, we're looking to set aside budget for twenty twenty one and twenty two to hire a sustainability director. And I wonder, I have two questions. First, is that it's a full time role you're recommending? And budget for twenty twenty one is kind of already been done. So that's kind of you know, not, I think, a question on the table, but I'm wondering and I maybe ask the staff who you've been interfacing with, you know, what their thoughts on that are around somebody to help guide this process. I understand, you know, there is the green team and I think it's fantastic that it is truly a very much a community led effort. But I'm wondering, you know, what the thoughts are from staff on you know, this what seems like a position is this a role that, you know, the engineer assistant engineer that we talked about can take on? What are the thoughts on that?
So oh, I'm sorry, Paul, jump in.
Yeah.
Just interestingly, my eyes went to the same thing when I read the report for the first time. And honestly, in our discussions leading up to tonight and the adoption of the resolution and the plan itself is that you know, we would have those conversations with the green team to find out exactly you know, what kind of lift is going to be necessary or what we're looking to to accomplish in the short term. And then kind of make the decisions on whether that's a personnel addition to the township, whether it's something that we can contract with someone to to help us with on a third party basis. Or if it's a role that can be combined with something else. You know, as we add new initiatives and new priorities. It's it's hard to to divide people up into more and more pieces. But if you know, again, it's tough to answer that directly now, not understanding or not hearing yet what the green teams ultimately going to prioritize and suggest to the board that we try to tackle first. But at some point, I do think that you know, if we've got someone who's who's doing consistent code reviews to make recommendations to our subboards and ultimately the board of commissioners on, you know, building code updates, zoning code updates to either mandate or incentivize, you know, electricity or, you know, houses or developments that are zero emissions. That it will take an additional resource of some kind. One quick anecdote I'll share when our meeting that we had with with Paul and his team was, you know, perhaps this is a position where we can combine it with someone who has some grant experience. Someone who can actively seek and apply for grants on a regular basis, not necessarily focused just on this initiative, but all the various things that we're applying for grants to help pay for. So stormwater, sewers, roads, parks, all of those types of things. If we can get that kind of resource who can, you know, wear multiple hats like most of us do, that that may be an opportunity. So that's a long way of saying that I think there's still some discussions to be had and before we we have a recommendation that we're ready to come to the board with on that front.
So this resolution, though, as I look at it, it doesn't have anything specific around a position in there. So this is more of just to approve the concept and then to continue to investigate and how we can move the project forward.
Yeah, exactly. My takeaway after reading the report, well, going back to the twenty nineteen resolution and tying it to this report is in twenty nineteen, a broad set of goals were voted on and approved by the board of commissioners. This is a roadmap to help get us there. And along that road, there's going to be hundreds of points of you know, forks in the road, decisions to be made, prioritization and all that good stuff. So not too dissimilar from a budget, so to speak. And we set aside money for certain things. And as as we go along, you know, we may spend it on that. We may ultimately deviate or something like that. So yeah, this is just a roadmap to get us where the board said that they wanted to see the township in the long term.
And just one final question. Mr. Spiegel, is if there was to be a sustainability director, is that a position that can be grant funded? I know in your presentation, you mentioned, you know, it definitely seems to be a field where it is ripe for grants to support these initiatives. Is that something that could be supported by a grant?
It can, but it might be a limited term that you'd be able to do that with a grant. You're not going to be able to get a grant that'll pay for someone for five or 10 years, but maybe you know, for in the short term, but it doesn't have to be a full time person. Especially at the beginning when the green team's still working on some things and you're not really going to have any budget for them till twenty twenty two. So if, you know, so so that's really when the position is important. But you do need to have someone focused on this and responsible for it and have some measure some metrics to measure your performance on. There are and you want that person to be looking for funding opportunities. We listed a bunch in the report. And there are things you really want to take advantage of to help you fund your process moving forward.
Great. Thank you.
And we're always here to help out if you need any technical advice.
Thank you. That's all, Mr. Larkin.
Mr. Farhi?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Thank you, Mr. Spiegel for being here. So I heard a hundred and eleven items. Is that correct?
That was just, it's a lot and I never really counted them all in the report.
Okay. No, 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 that's fine. I missed the, I missed that webinar that you hosted. Do you have a ballpark on what the total cost would be?
This is not just a plan for township facilities. This is a plan for all of the commercial businesses, institutions, residents to get
Sure.
tie into, but a lot of the things we're doing save energy and save money as well.
Okay.
So in the early stages, you can use some of the, you know, you go for the the things that are have the quickest ROI or return on investment and reinvest those savings in other elements of the plan.
But you don't have a total cost per se for the township and then the cost benefits for that.
We do have a little bit of well, no, we don't have the full cost because we don't know what all the actions are going to be for the next thirty years. And technologies and economics are going to change based on fuel prices and the impacts that we see from the pollution that we're generating by burning fossil fuels.
Got it. And then I just have one more question. Hopefully you can follow me on my train of thought here. I feel that this is something that we're coming to be the township. And I don't want to speak for the businesses or the universities around here. That we would be like first to market. And unfortunately, that stuff gets changed where you have to do this. Everyone had to have a Betamax until the VCR came out. And then you had to pay for it twice. Is there maybe a benefit in waiting a little bit and finding out which technologies are going to catch on as opposed to putting all of our money in one technology and then that's not it. There's a better technology that comes around and then now we're stuck with a technology that's not as good and it's you know, we have to do it twice.
Well, that's one of the reasons for the plan is to not be doing things that you then have to do over again. And the plan will actually help prevent that from happening. It's it's something that we've seen some of our clients get off of oil heat for their township building, just as an example. And convert to natural gas, even though they've made a commitment to be hundred percent renewable energy. So now they're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on the gas infrastructure for their building. And then, you know, you can't really get hundred percent renewable natural gas in the volumes you would need to keep your building heated through the winter.
So.
So building that infrastructure, you're kind of going backwards a little bit and then you're at some point you're going to have to replace it with.
Got it. So I am all for the environment, protecting it and finding ways to to you know, to to really give our children a better earth, you know, to leave it better than we found it. But without knowing what the total costs are, especially in a year of COVID where we had to do. We had to really make some some hard decisions and some decisions that we should have made, which were hard decisions that we didn't. I don't know where our budget's going to come in. So I would just feel more comfortable knowing what some of these items are, just for the for the township, because that's what we as a board have control over.
Well, we could price out items that get listed as priority items for the next two or three years.
Okay.
But we can't go out fifty years because.
No, that's fine. If you could like a five year, including what it would cost for the labor. Until I see that, it's just a hard. It would be hard for me to say yes. It's not that I don't support what you do and what everyone does. It's just I don't know where our budget's going to land and to, you know, to say that we're going to throw X amount in here and we find out it's much more than what was proposed. It's unfortunately a just too big of a commitment now for me to devote yes on this. If you can get me what the costs are and the cost benefits are, I'll be happy to support it in the future.
Sean, I think this plan, this resolution allows them, permits them to go forward and develop that plan. Like they don't have the plan. We need to say, go ahead and do the plan. Am I, if I'm wrong, someone please correct me.
What's the cost? That's my question. How much? We spent thirty eight thousand. How much more are we going to spend? And I don't see that on there. I just see that we're going to spend a part time or full time director and then there are all these other costs and I hear a hundred and eleven items and I'm just wondering, I want to wrap my head around a number close to it. So if we're way over or way under, that's something that we can relate all this to. But just to say we're going to do this and whatever that number is, I am uncomfortable saying yes, this is not my money.
I understood this to be something more in the nature of an à la carte menu that we were signing up to go to the restaurant and that we would then order items off of the menu once we got there and they were approved by the EAC to sort of break out of the metaphor. Am I right about that?
Yeah, that's really how it's laid out and it's a whole menu of you for you to select items to work on and you could decide that next year you don't want to do anything because you have other priorities. But at some point in the near future, you need to be starting on this plan if you want to meet the goals by the end, because you do want to spread it out. You do want to start saving, you know, doing the the things that pay for themselves in a year or two years. You're getting a fifty percent return on your investment when you can do something that pays for itself in two years. And by not doing those for a couple of years, you're missing out on you know, that's why you could invest your money.
So I'm confused. I thought we spent the forty thousand or the thirty eight thousand to find out what some of these were. Now you're saying that we have to pay again to get what these numbers to get what these items are. I'm just confused on that because I know that what was the initial layout of the forty thousand for? And then how much more is it going to cost thereafter?
Paul, if you don't mind, let if I let me jump in maybe with an example as I see it and then I don't know if that's going to help answer the questions or or not, but a good example might be this, the township building. You identify in the report of converting the township building over to be more energy efficient, you know, swapping out the light bulbs to all LEDs, lowering the amount of electricity used by the building, making sure that that electricity is a hundred percent renewable. So that's identified in the report as something the township should be looking into doing. The cost commissioner that you're asking about would be the actual investment into that new the new lighting system, the new, the actual, you know, bulbs in the wires that go into the building. And then, so that's what we would bring back to the board is pursuant to this plan. We're going to upgrade this building with all new LED lights, for example. That's going to cost, you know, X. The payback and the energy savings is three years, you know, we'll be, you know, we'll have that money recovered in three years. And that we would bring that to the board as one item out of the, to continue the example, the hundred and eleven that are out there. But that would give the board an opportunity to evaluate that particular decision on its own merits. But still be consistent with this plan. Conversely, you know, we have a fleet of vehicles that range from, you know, something we could go electric with right now and probably be okay to, you know, I don't know when you know, when they're going to have reliable police cars on electric or, you know, garbage trucks on electric. That's something that's going to take a little bit more time and we don't know how much those are going to cost compared to their you know, their gasoline fueled alternatives. So those are the items that I think will take a little bit more time. And again, that will have to be based on its own merits.
And there are a lot of the items that are no cost to the township. So there are elements of building code updates or zoning ordinance.
Okay, I'll just end with this. I just thought when we spent the forty thousand dollars, like we were going to get a plan and now it's like, okay, yeah, the plan is we're going to tell you now more what you have to do. I thought all that stuff was.
Sean, there is a plan.
There is.
I haven't seen it.
Read it. You didn't read.
Where's the plan? Where's the plan? It's was it in the agenda? Because I'm looking at it. Shouldn't it be on the agenda? That's what we're voting on.
Well, we're not voting on the plan today.
Not voting on the plan. May I ask a, may I ask a question?
You can. I do want to jump in and just say, because I've kind of hinted, I don't want to leave people in suspense. I should have said this before and I apologize for jumping in. If you want to watch the presentation, a link to it is on the township websites, environmental advisory council section under Practical Energy Solutions, presentation, March two, twenty twenty one, where I apologize.
No worries. I guess my question is about the relationship between the township and the green team going forward. So I, you know, I understand what we have done to date and I I couldn't recite the plan back to you verbatim, but I have looked through it and I understand that, you know, we have we could use it as a guide to get to our end goal by implementing things as we can afford to and prepare us for the future of of moving to renewable energy. But I'm wondering what the what the relationship between the green team will be now. I assume everybody is still very invested in this. But I'd just like to hear what the plans are for the ongoing relationships.
So as I understand it, the if assigned, if if adopted tonight, the green team would take ownership of this plan as a subcommittee or a subgroup of the board. Not too dissimilar from, say, the Shade Tree or the Parks and Rec Board that take these very specific matters on, you know, they take this report and then they'll they'll work with the township staff liaison, start prioritizing. And then as as Paul laid out earlier, those priorities will make their way to the board of commissioners either by way of the budget or individual decisions on enacting different elements of the plan.
And without a paid position that we're currently, we're not voting on now, but I understand the importance of it. But if we're not able to get there, will the township be able to have the bandwidth to do the liaison? will the township be able to have the bandwidth to do the liaison piece without a a new person so that this doesn't get stalled? Um, if we can't hire a sustainability officer right away.
No, I I appreciate that question. Um, it'll, it'll be tough. Well, we could tackle some of the low hanging fruit that all identified. Um, there's energy audits and things that we can do within this municipal building. Uh, and that's just talking about Radnor Township. But as Paul pointed out, there are elements to this that go beyond just the township as an organization. Uh, it would affect the, you know, the commercial and um, residential elements of the township too. Those things can be worked on as well, uh, and can work through those boards. Um, you know, if there's uh, uh, one example, and and Paul forgive me if I'm a little bit off on my wording, but um, you know, we could uh, work with the the building code to uh, incentivize people to use solar if you're building a new house. I'm not sure there's a lot of staff time involved in in having that discussion and ultimately having the board consider that for adoption, for example. Um, that versus doing a review of our entire fleet, switching over to electric. That's gonna be a much heavier lift and someone that we're gonna need uh, to dedicate to. So uh, yeah, we'll be limited in the outset. Um, but we have a staff liaison to that committee. Uh, like I said, we can engage on some of the the quick, low hanging fruit items just to get the ball rolling. Again, if the board adopts this.
Who's our liaison now?
Right now, it's Ben Cooper in the Finance Department.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben. I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
I I just had a couple of things. The, I I read this as adopting the plan, so I think that this is adopting a plan. It says that and it seems as if from that plan that we're delegating uh, management to pick priorities. But I I do read this as a commitment to hire more staff on the taxpayer uh, costs. And I I think that uh, it's a good question by Commissioner Farin that, you know, what is the cost that we're looking at? Cause I I think it it clearly calls for a a commitment and it'll be recorded if this is adopted. And I I think people will interpret that as a commitment to have a new bureaucracy uh, and a new township uh, group to be in charge of this and it it could well cost um, millions or hundreds of millions of dollars, you know, whatever it is, we don't know what it is, but um, changing every building, changing every car, uh, all the infrastructure obviously will be very expensive. And that will be over a period of years. I I understand that. So um, I I'm all for doing the things that are better, cheaper and more efficient. And and so I would encourage Bill for you and Steve and the folks, if we notice of a way that's it's better and cheaper and it it's, it has a quick payback, I I don't think you need to be wed to this to this plan and to have somebody tell you to do it, to go ahead and do these things. Um, so if if changing to LED lights is the thing to do and that's gonna save money, by all means, let's do that. Um, I I don't think that you need to be encumbered, uh, Bill, by this plan is is what I'm saying. So um, I I am reminded, I saw excerpts from the Michael Moore uh, movie Planet of the Humans recently. And basically, I guess, you know, where he's certainly no uh, uh, fossil fuels person. But he 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 expressed some some severe concerns about the cost um, and the long-term liability liability of things like windmills and and solar panels. And that they actually are a huge cost when they need to be replaced. And they take more energy to make them and operate them that that's out of fossil fuels. They end up being actually more pollutant uh, as far as CO2 um, than fossil, than using natural gas and and other areas. So um, are are we committing to use nuclear energy or are we're committing? Or we're delegating the authority to the township to commit to only windmills and um, solar? Is that what the plan is, uh, Mr. Spiegel?
Plan is to fulfill your commitment that the township made to reach the Ready for One Hundred goals. And I think that resolution was passed a couple of years ago. And after it was passed, there was, and we're finding this in many of the other thirty-two townships in southeastern PA that have signed on to this commitment. Once they sign that commitment, they spend about a year trying to figure out how to get started and realize that they didn't really have a path forward. And so um, we're getting a lot of calls and there's other consultants as well about developing a plan, at least a roadmap to get there. It's not the only way to get there. As things change, it 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 can be used. You know, it's sort of like a GPS. It's gonna recalculate a little bit and still try to get you to your goal, even if you're sidetracked, but it has everything you need to get started on this plan and to continue for years to come. Um, it's got the funding sources that are coming. Um, it's got upgrades to building codes, you know, even something simple like requiring new homes to be solar ready. Not where they have to have solar on them, but at least make it a plug and play kind of thing. It's a very small minute cost as compared to the cost of a new home. Um, but it's something that is so much easier to do when you are building the house than after it's built. And so trying to improve the new infrastructure that's being built saves you that huge expense and inconvenience of trying to go back and retrofit the entire building to make it energy efficient and to allow it to use renewable energy as well.
Well, thank you. Again, I'm I'm all for uh, elements that are cheaper, better and more efficient. Um, um, solar panels in this part of the country are are not um, very useful much of the year and um, we saw in Texas that um, the windmills and and the solar was not able to to meet the the energy needs. So um, my concern with it is that we are committing to a lot of costs without knowing that it's going to be a benefit to the taxpayers. Thank you.
So I I guess I just want to continue to um, try to clarify. We are not voting tonight to hire a sustainability officer. In fact, if you look at the plan, they highlight the need for somebody throughout, but um, I just opened it and glanced and my eyes went straight to that there's an alternative. You could do this through consultants. I mean, there is nothing that we're voting on tonight that says that that's gonna be our ultimate goal. It, what we're talking about tonight is fulfilling the promise that uh, not the promise, fulfilling the um, commitment that the board made prior to uh, review and implement as much as we can this plan moving forward. And each of those elements will be coming up to the appropriate decision-making body, whether that's Bill deciding whether or not he's got the bandwidth to put a staff on a quick audit. Um, and we can check that box. Or is it deciding that there's gonna be a new staff member, which would have to come to the board? And we would have this great, robust conversation about the uh, return on investment and the cost benefit analysis of that um, at another time. But tonight, we are just, um, if we approve this resolution, we will be um, furthering our commitment to these goals that are very um, far reaching and distant in some regard and then some we could do quickly, efficiently. And but nothing's going to be done by writing a check that we don't know about. So I don't think that's the conversation tonight. I think it's an important one to have when we can go into the next budget season, see if that's the year to do it. Maybe it's not next year, because it's the year after the um, issues we've run into with the with COVID. You know, maybe we have to look out for um, a consultant before we can ever commit to a full-time staff person. So I just I think that we're getting um, into the details of particulars that um, not that that's a bad thing and we're gonna have to do that, but the question tonight is not will there be money outlaid for any of these projects? And then the question tonight is, are we committed to the Ready for One Hundred? Um, and is this plan um, the, you know, our appropriate guide forward and, you know?
In this evening is not about a false narrative about windmills and solar panels in Texas that were never met meant to meet the needs of the drastic, drastic weather event that we saw down there. So let's just distinguish between what we're talking about tonight and false narratives.
Um, Commissioner Maroni, uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Enderley, you finished?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Maroni, so then can, so then would you support us striking from the proposed legislation, the fiscal impact line that says set aside budget for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two for initial implementation through the hiring of a sustainability director or an on-call consultant to provide the inflammation support. So um, would you?
That's not in the resolution, is it?
Yeah, that's that is, that's what I have proposed legislation.
That's the legislative memo.
Yeah, right.
That, yeah, that's, that's not in the resolution. The resolution is the one that says whereas. So below it is a memo that supports that, but there's nothing in the resolution that would commit us to any dollars tonight. Yeah, but I don't think we're, no, it's it's very clearly not committing us to dollars tonight, which I think is important. And I think that when we are talking about committing dollars, we should have that conversation very openly and, you know, have a lot of make sure everybody's, you know, got the materials that they need to review ahead of time so that we're talking about it and, you know, in a, in a informed manner. But tonight, there is nothing in the resolution that is committing dollars. It's commit, it's making a commitment to further this plan, which it, we've already done as a, as a township.
Well, I think with that, I think what we've done is we've allocated some money and then it's whether we allocate more money. So tha- that's kind of where we are, but I I I see that they are a one and a one-off. They're not two totally separate things.
Yeah, I I think that it lays the path. I think that you can argue that it does commit in the future for this this position, but even if you say it doesn't, it definitely lays the path and the foundation um, for those expenditures. And um, what the statements I made are not false narratives. There's, there's, there's no question that, that a lot of these low um, emission and renewable energy sources, there's a lot of issues still with them. And there's a lot of difficulty, especially in areas where we are in the northeast or the uh, east central area, that a lot of these methods do not work. And we, we need to rely, today this technology, we need to rely on fossil fuels, natural gas and other things. So it's not a false narrative, uh, Commissioner Enderley. Thank you.
So um, you know, again, if you look at the plan, it is filled with recommendations. And I think if, you know, just at the common usage of that word, it is a recommendation. Nothing gets done without a sitting board of commissioners making those decisions about which project to choose, if any. Um, I mean, I, I think that there are many that we should, but there are going to be some that are going to be decided by boards. You know, twenty years down the road that are not decisions for us to make. And to your point, Commissioner Booker, there are energy solutions that, you know, uh, have room for improvement or, you know, haven't um, that, you know, haven't become broadly available at this time, but in twenty years they may be. And that's what the township needs to decide at that point. So I think what we're looking at tonight is firming up our commitment to this um, Ready for One Hundred as a prior board that some of you are on already committed to. And to be open to the findings and recommendations of the report. Um, and, you know, I think our, I think our township wants us to do this. I mean, I think that people want us to think smart about energy and efficiency and all of that. But tonight, I will vote yes strongly that we should um, please accept this report and its recommendations so that we can take time to delve into them and figure out what makes sense now.
If, Bill, Bill, in in the resolution, can you just explain what the, what the language means? Um, request township resources as, or request resources from the Board of Commissioners as necessary?
Uh, I'm looking at the the resolution.
In the last where, the last whereas sort of.
Therefore be resolved. It's one of the making recommendations and requesting township resources as necessary. Which I think is what we would do as necessary and when appropriate, we'll, we will vote on those.
Yeah, so that is, that's assigning the task of taking this report and working on those different elements and reporting back to the board with recommendations. Um, and as we've talked about, some of those will uh, require resources of some sort, either time, money or vote.
All right, so 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 you, we have the plan in our hands. Um, it's available online for residents. Um, the green team is formed and 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 is ready to support. And we have groups like CarFAC that can look at financial impact. So what what's the necessity to have this resolution?
This resolution would formally adopt it by the Board of Commissioners. Uh, with, without a, an adoption from the Board of the Commissioners, uh, it lacks any direction. Cause if the plan by itself, if everyone got to work on it, uh, and then we come to the board with uh, some ideas and recommendations, uh, the board could just say, you know, we didn't authorize you to work on it. Why, you know, why are you bringing that to us? This, this solidifies that direction and makes it clear.
There's a large element of the plan that talks about the partnering that's gonna be needed, because the the township facilities themselves are not the largest part of this plan. It's getting the buy-in from the other stakeholders in the township. Uh, the school district has committed to the Ready for One Hundred goal as well. After a lot of lobbying by stakeholders in the school district and they want to work with the township. And the other stakeholders I mentioned before, Mainline Health is working towards the same goals. Villanova is working towards the same goals. Cabrini's working towards the same goal. So um, it's kind of a group effort. And if you pool resources, you can do it a lot more effectively and efficiently. And showing a little bit of leadership in um, in getting out in front of things can really make that process just go more quickly and more smoothly.
Just one more question. Explain to me the difference between the resolution and the proposed legislation. Is that what's gonna be, we're gonna vote on that next? I mean, why is this attached to the resolution? A resolution is just great. You want to do it, find it. Doesn't necessarily have much teeth, but I'm reading that the next step is this legislation. Am I correct? I guess this question is probably to the solicitor.
Yeah, Sean, we get, we get proposed legislation memos for most of our resolutions. You have the resolution and then this is the background information that staff prepared for us so that we would have a better understanding of what the resolution is. We get these all the time.
It doesn't look like it was from staff, but it looked like it was from Mr. Spiegel. But John, asking you, is that the next step, that proposed legislation?
Now, as, as Maura said, the, these memos that are prepared by the township staff or consultants, just describe uh, what the proposed resolution, the reason for the proposed resolution and giving you the background. Sean, I think the easiest thing to understand this resolution is the last whereas clause says, this is what this resolution's doing. First of all, it says this plan has been adopted, completed the report, February twenty twenty-one. And then the last whereas says, Board of Commissioners is assigning the green team the task of working with the township administration to develop priority elements of the plan, which was just completed. And then make recommendations to the board and go to the board for money. So you have this plan with a whole big piece of, a big cake. And this is saying to the green team, go ahead and, you know, work on this and bring us back some priority elements. What should we be doing in the next five years, the next ten years and make recommendations? And it's at that point that you're gonna get a request to spend money. I mean, that's the way I read this. The legislation is just the background. Um, and uh, you know, an explanation of what's. you know, an explanation of what's, if you approve.
John, can you just make it clear that the legislative summary on this item and any of the others on are non-binding? Yeah, that's not what the board's, that is purely informational purposes only.
The only thing voting to approve is the resolution. The proposed legislation is just additional explanatory material about the background of what's going on here.
Sure. Mr. Spiegel, are you going to be asking this, the township for any more consulting fees?
Not at this time, no, not unless our services are needed on some specific project.
So, so you're done, you're, you're turning this over to what is going to be another committee like Parks and Rec or Shade Tree? And they will look at these action items and decide what is feasible to do at this point and what is not. That's, that's basically what it comes down to.
Yes, yeah, we're done with our services at this point.
We've been talking for a while. Why don't I hand this off? First off, do we have any staff comment? Hearing none. Sarah Pilling, your hand has been up for a while. I'm going to ask you for your feedback. Public comment.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you, Board of Commissioners. I'm Sarah Pilling. I've lived on Garrett Avenue for 39 years. And I'm one of the advisors to the green team because I've been very interested and very involved in climate change for the last four or five years. This movement is to be a collective action. It's not just the township. It's not just Board of Commissioners. It's asking the residents to take a look at how they use their energy. Do they want to, instead of running their home at 72, would they like to turn it back to 68 and save X on their fuel bill? Would they like to consider turning off the lights in the rooms that they are not in? It's maybe as simple as that. Let me give you an example. Radnor House has many, many apartments. I can't tell you how many. They decided they were using far too much water. They changed the flappers on the toilets. And they put new washers on the faucets. And in six months, they saved a million gallons of water. These are some of the very small things. All of us collectively, Radnor, Havreford Township, Tridifern, Chester County, Montgomery County, you name it, across the United States. We're all going to need to work together to move to remediate some of the outrageous effects of climate change. So that's really all I want to say. I know there are many other people in the waiting room ready to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sherry.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners Booker, Abel and Farley and four John Nagel enablers. With respect to how we are now at public comment with this particular topic, a comment from me. When a commissioner is asking questions because, at least in my opinion, he's been getting nothing but stream of consciousness words from a fellow commissioner, she of the fifth ward and a solicitor. It's not appropriate for the president of the board merely to say, I think we've been talking enough. Time for some staff comments, public comment. If a commissioner has questions, the board should continue to entertain those questions, provided they're not duplicative. And I didn't think that Commissioner Farley, at least in my opinion, was getting answers to some very specific questions he was asking, both of the fifth ward commissioner as well as with John Rice. Perhaps he felt satisfied by those answers, whatever they may have been. But I didn't think they were answered. And I don't think it's appropriate again to immediately start glossing past and going to staff and public comment at that time. That's not how a meeting is supposed to be conducted. We expect commissioners to be prepared for meetings, to have real questions to be asked. And if a certain commissioner decides to use stream of consciousness advocacy to fill up minute upon minute upon minute upon minute, that should not be inuring to the detriment of other commissioners who might have specific pointed questions. Now, with respect to another comment that was made by the second ward commissioner, whose name escapes me, other than he apparently has a firefighter background because he brings it up a lot at meetings.
Mr. Sherry, I'm going to remind you, no ad hominem attacks.
He seems to still be muted.
I've asked him to unmute a few times now. There we go.
You're critiquing me for using ad hominem attacks. You had a fellow commissioner to Commissioner Booker tonight, the second ward firefighter commissioner. I don't think that's ad hominem. He describes himself.
I will mute you again, please. Please just confine your comments to what is relevant.
What are you talking about?
Resolution's relevant. That's all that's relevant.
Okay, am I speaking now? Can I be heard or am I still being muted for reasons mysterious?
I can hear you thus far. I haven't heard anything about the resolution.
The point is that if a commissioner is being during the current discussion of the current agenda item, being told that he is engaging in a false narrative, if the board president is being in any way consistent, he would certainly consider that to be ad hominem. As opposed to saying that somebody is babbling or engaging in stream of consciousness. It is important again to be consistent with respect to board comments. Saying that Commissioner Booker may be incorrect in terms of his factual understanding is one thing. To be accusing a commissioner of peddling a false narrative would certainly be to the person, e.g. ad hominem, than it would be any type of constructive remark. And yet mute from the board president, Jack Larkin. If we're going to run a meeting and be board president, let's ensure the commissioners and members of the public are treated the same way insofar of what is and what is not characterized as ad hominem. And likewise, let's not just move the meeting along when a commissioner, at least in my opinion, is asking specific, relevant questions and getting stream of consciousness remarks in return. Thanks.
Ms. Zajak.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Becca Zajak. I'm a senior at Radnor High School and I live on Wooded Lane. I would first like to thank you for taking the time to hear our comments tonight and having this discussion about our resolution. Excuse me. Tonight, I am urging you to support Ready for 100's Renewable Energy and Conservation Plan, prepared by Practical Energy Solutions. I've led a student support for Ready for 100 in the past during 2019. And more recently, my group of high school students worked with the school board to adopt a similar clean energy resolution. Since the school district and the township have the common goal of achieving 100% clean energy, it is important that the two work together in achieving our respective commitments. The plan under review tonight highlights that it will be important to create a municipal position such as a sustainability director as soon as possible. This has been a topic of discussion tonight briefly, but if I may continue that thought, continue that thought. We recognize that bringing someone on full-time might be a difficult expense at this time. So if that is the case, we suggest that the township seek, at least initially, to partner with the school district in hiring someone to fill this part, part-time, to fill this role part-time. The shared director will then spearhead sustainability efforts in both the community and the school district, run marketing campaigns around them, engage community stakeholders and track progress. This would allow cost sharing and also facilitate potential partnering on clean energy and energy-saving projects. There are also considerable grant opportunities available for these projects. And Radnor needs, and Radnor needs professional capacity to take advantage of such grant funding solicitation. As I urge you again to support this plan, I remind you that while I'm the only student making public comment tonight, my voice represents the many Radnor students looking up to your leadership. I personally am excited to move forward with this plan and I hope that you show similar enthusiasm with your supportive votes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. This man.
Hi, thank you, Robin Mann. I live on Beachwood Drive in Rosemont and I'm serving in a supporting role with the green team. I'm very excited about the plan. I, I just want to highlight one aspect and that is, you know, what, what really excites me is, is the Practical Energy Solutions did a quite a monumental task of developing a whole compilation of all the grant opportunities that homeowners can take advantage of to retrofit their homes. So you know, the first step is, is steps I can take just with the help of Pico to switch out their light bulbs. But there are a lot of, of more significant next step types of retrofit opportunities that do have the availability of grant funding to support. And so I see the potential for the green team to really facilitate, you know, homeowners accessing information about those opportunities and moving ahead. And so the whole education piece of this plan is, is is something that I think the green team will be likely to really pick up and work on quite a good deal. And, and that's going to be an advantage for the township. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mueller.
Yes, good evening. This is Mark Mueller. Thank you for hearing me tonight. I'm a proud member of the green team. I'm a proud resident of Radnor. And I'm also a professional engineer going into pursuing graduate work in sustainable engineering. This is a very exciting time to be plotting a path forward to the 100% renewable goal. A lot of discussion was made tonight about cost effectiveness of going green. And the good news for Radnor Township and all of our neighboring neighbors in Pennsylvania is that solar and wind right now are cost competitive with fossil fuel plants and getting even less expensive. So, you know, the, the cost effectiveness piece is there. As far as automobiles, there's multiple sources saying that by 2023, an electric car will be less expensive than an internal combustion engine. I think there was some mention of the GM Super Bowl ad where they're committing, you know, a manufacturer of their size is committing to all electric vehicles. So economies of scale are bound to tip in our favor in the near term. Plotting a future out 30 years is a complicated thing. And so it, it all starts with having a compass heading. I believe this comprehensive plan will help as a resource to guide the township towards that future. And really encourage the, the commissioners to consider voting yes for this effort tonight. In terms of whether renewable energy works in our part of the country, just on February 16th, a solar farm went live in Franklin Township, Pennsylvania. And that is being, that is going to provide 10% of SEPTA's electricity needs. And they're in the process of building a second solar farm to provide a second 10% of all SEPTA's electric, electric needs. So that's a very major organization in our part of the world that is committed to going forward with solar to power transportation in our region. So again, thank you for your time and really encourage a yes vote.
Excellent. Seeing no additional public comment, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All impose nay. Motion passes five to two. Moving on to had it up a second ago. There we go. Item three.
I think that, I think that was only a four to two vote. I don't see Damian. Do you see him?
Thought I saw Damon a second ago.
I didn't see him when we were voting.
Oh, his screen is off. I take that back. Thank you for the correction. Forty-two. With Commissioner Enderly off the dais, metaphorically speaking. Moving on to item three C, resolution number 2021-29, approval of the Delcora Asset Transfer Act 537 Plan. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Who can tell us about this resolution?
I can take that, Commissioner. And for more detailed questions, I do have two gentlemen from Delcora on board. So in the legislative memo, there was just a brief synopsis of how our sewage is conveyed. And it is conveyed to Delcora and majority sent to the Philadelphia Southwest Treatment Plant. So the PWD is under a sewer overflow control program to manage its combined sewer system with estimated costs for compliance that will cost the Eastern Service District of Delcora hundreds of millions of dollars. So Delcora feels that through the transfer of assets, i.e. the sale of Delcora to Aqua Pennsylvania, Aqua Pennsylvania wastewater, they can better address the capital needs more efficiently and cost effectively than Delcora alone, thereby saving the municipality's money. Their rate increases will be controlled by the Aqua PA and PUC. But a portion of the proceeds of the sale will go to a trust to stabilize rates. So the resolution before the commissioners is regarding the transfer of assets, i.e. the sale of Delcora to Aqua Pennsylvania wastewater. And that includes their collection, conveyance and treatment areas. So if the township does not pass this resolution or takes no action, that's considered the same. What that means is in a few years, Radnor Township will have to dispose of its wastewater somewhere else other than through Delcora. We will create our own Act 537 plan. We would go through an alternative analysis to see how we convey it to another treatment plant. Can another treatment plant accept it? Do you create your own treatment plant? So that's it in a nutshell. This, this resolution is request, requesting concurrence on the asset transfer of Delcora to Aqua PA wastewater.
Great. Do we have any commissioner comment?
I, I, I have a question, Steve and or John, about exactly what this is approving. Radnor Township has no assets real or personal that are being transferred to Delcora or to, that are being transferred to Aqua wastewater. Is that true or false?
That is true.
Okay, so what exactly is this request? What is Radnor approving if Radnor's not a part of the asset transfer?
So Radnor Township is part of the Delcora Act 537, as we all are in the eastern and western wastewater districts.
What is the Act 37?
Act 537 is a sewage planning tool that we're all required to have.
Okay, so Radnor, Radnor by virtue of it contributing to the Delcora plant has, has certain regulations and other requirements because it, it contributes its effluent to that, ultimately to that plant.
Correct. So we pay, we pay RHM roughly $4 million a year. What we pay to RHM is for RHM's conveyance and all the downstream items. So Delcora sends RHM an invoice that is spread up based on, from a budget standpoint, estimated flow rates for the following year. We're not selling our system. It's concurrence for Delcora to sell its system to Aqua PA wastewater. But we are not selling your pipes in Radnor Township.
Right, again, so I, I don't, I don't see what the approval is. And I don't understand why you're characterizing it as we will no longer be part of Delcora if we don't agree to a sale of assets that we don't own. So you gotta tie that all together. What, why are you saying, what is the legalities of this that, that makes you say that we will no longer be part of Delcora and will have to dispose of township affluent through another method?
Because that's what the Gannett Fleming Report, the Act 537, they did for Delcora states very clearly. If we are not part, if we do not approve of this, we will have to find our own methods of disposal. That was very clear.
Okay, is that?
So, hey, Commissioner Booker, let me just give you a little bit more info. The, every municipality in this state has what's called a sewage facilities plan. Called an Act 537 plan also because that was the name of the state law. called an Act 537 Plan also, because that was the name of the state law, which required that every municipality have a sewage facilities plan under the Pennsylvania Sewage Facilities Act. So you start with that, and that could be on-lot sewer, that could be public sewer, that could be a combination. Everybody has one, and it's on file with DEP.
And you have a... That plant basically says, we have this system, we have this effluent, and we'll test it at these intervals, and we're part of RHM.
And it says that our wastewater flow goes through the Delcora service area. We're not approving this asset transfer agreement. We're just changing our plan to say it's no longer going to go through Delcora. It's going to go through the new buyer of Delcora, Aqua. That's basically what this does. And the deal to sell that system, we're not part of that. We're just changing our official 537 plan to reflect a new entity that's taking that over if the sale goes through. That's it. That's what this is about.
Right, that makes sense. Does our plan specifically say Delcora, or does it say the plant and would have no bearing on who the owner is?
No, it says Delcora. Steve, you're more familiar with the plan.
And the solicitor dead on, and he explained it very well. And if you look at the next to last, whereas Radnor Township finds that the Act 537 Plan update described above, blah, 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 so to speak. So the solicitor put it on there, put it out there much more clearly. We're approving the plan, Act 537 Plan update, of which us and many, many other municipalities are part of for Delcora. So that's what this is saying. Now, if we don't approve this, it's noted in the Gannett Fleming report, then we have a few years to find an alternative method of conveying and treating our sanitary sewer.
Well, see, that's what I don't understand. We're not saying we're going to change our effluent discharge anywhere. All we're saying is we don't know if there's a sale. We deliver our effluent to RHM, which then in turn pipes it to Delcora. We don't, I personally, as commissioner, do not know who owns the facility, never knew who owned the facility, or what the particulars of it are. Why would something so minor and non-substantive as having the old name of a facility require that Radnor be kicked out of being able to?
So we would know, that would no longer be our Act 537 plan, and we would have to create our own Act 537 plan solely for Radnor. But I'm going to ask, I have on the line here Charlie Hurst and Mike DeSantis from Delcora. And gentlemen, I don't know if you can answer the commissioner's questions better than myself or the solicitor as to why the concurrence of all the municipalities is needed.
This is Charlie Hurst with Delcora. Thank you in advance for your time, and I'll try to answer that. It is a, both solicitor and the engineer have done a wonderful job, you know, explaining the backstory. This is a, this is a really a DEP, Pennsylvania State requirement. The 537 planning process is something that every municipality in the state has to go through. And your 537 currently, as the solicitor has indicated, says that your waste will be conveyed, in your case conveyed, not treated, your waste is conveyed by Delcora to Philadelphia. And so this plan, those assets that are currently owned by Philadelphia, or excuse me, by Delcora, those assets will be transferred to Aqua. This is a matter of bringing your Act 537 plan in conformance or make it consistent with, you know, what will be happening once the sale's complete.
So why, why is it, why is it the response so draconian that if you don't approve that we are making the sale, that you will no longer be part of the Delcora effluent transfer? You will no longer be allowed to, you'll have to find a different way to discharge effluent? Why is it, why is this, if it's just a matter of changing the old owner to the new owner in a report, why such a draconian and threatening response?
I think that, that's exactly right. It's from an ownership point of view. From where Radnor sits, you don't know where, you know, what the owner is, right? And so...
We never, never did, no. We, right.
I don't blame you. Most people don't, right? And so this is a matter of changing the name, changing the ownership. And so by not adopting this plan, by saying despite the fact that it's just, you know, an ownership change and a name change, we're, we are, we Radnor would be not adopting that plan. It sets into motion, from DEP's point of view, a process where you're saying we no longer want to participate in this plan. We are no longer, we are opting out of this being our waste service. And so it's by not adopting the plan that's being proposed, you are essentially making the decision that we're going to, you know, not immediately, but we are going to, you know, go our own way because this is no longer our plan. We had a plan, and this is no longer our plan.
I just don't read that as, I'm surprised that they are taking such a hard line on this. But I don't read that as we no longer wish to be a part of the system just because we don't, we don't, we don't want to update the ownership. When is the, when is the ownership actually going to occur? What is the change in, when is the transfer going to occur? John Rice said, if it occurs, is it an if, or is it, it is, and will, and what's the date?
It is currently dependent on PUC, Pennsylvania PUC approval. That is currently projected to occur. The commissioners will be hearing this sometime in the next month or two, we believe. And after that, it was set into motion, a closed process.
Okay, so, I mean, so it doesn't seem like there's any, any really time pressure, Steve, to do this now. Why not do this after the sale goes through?
We are under a timeline. Actually, we're on the tail end of it. Delcora would have been preferred that, you know, this was addressed earlier. And if you read through the Act 537, it does note, you know, we have, if you don't approve this plan or you take no action, we have a few years to work this out, and Delcora in some fashion would assist us. But it does mean, as Charlie's...
It doesn't mean, it doesn't, no, just us waiting for the PUC to grant the approval and the sale to go through before we change our plan does not in any way mean we don't want to be part of sending effluent down to that plant.
I'll have to defer to the folks from Delcora to see if that throws a monkey wrench in the PUC portion. But my point being, there's no benefit to wait. It's in front of the board tonight. Waiting a month or two months doesn't change the situation. If we don't approve or we take no action, we now set ourselves up for in the next few years trying to figure out how we're going to convey our own sewage.
Again, I don't think, I don't think anybody's proposing that. We're not talking about, all I'm saying is, and I think it is behooves us, that we should wait until the PUC clears this and then make the change so we don't have to change it twice. If there's an issue, suppose the deal doesn't go through, then we have to change it back.
Did I not read correctly?
So I would say that we should do that. And as a second, a second item, I don't want to change the effluent and the discharge. That's not what this is. So is there something else that they're afraid of? Is there, are they saying, is there some other item that other people have? Is there an agenda that some people have that Delcora or Aqua are concerned about with this?
Are you asking me? I'm not aware of any. I think Charlie put it out properly. These are DEP requirements. The solicitor gave the background of what an Act 537 is. We all have them. We're required by law to have them.
I understand that, but certainly...
Following the requirements. I don't know of any such agenda.
Right, so certainly DEP understands that the deal to go through, when the deal, when the deal goes through, then people change their plans. So it seems like, is there some kind of other issue that they're concerned about, Charlie?
No, I really don't believe there is, Commissioner. I, you know, I suspect what's causing the confusion for you is probably that...
I'm not confused.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm wondering, what is the issue that they're concerned about? It seems like there must be more than just changing the name on a plan.
The issue is that we are being, we are being pressured by PUC, excuse me, by PADEP to bring this process to close. So in the sequence is this, we need to get, we, Delcora, need to get municipalities to adopt this plan so that we can submit it to PADEP for approval.
All right, so DEP, then they're considering adoption of this plan as a commitment to continue with the current effluent discharge structure.
Exactly, exactly right, exactly right. And so this is, you know, approval by the municipalities is a prerequisite to PADEP approving the plan, and...
All right, so I think that, so John and Steve, that seems to be, so DEP says, if you don't do this, you are not committing to continue with the current system. And that's different than if you got to change the name beforehand. So I, that seems like that's a clarification to me. Is there something else other than that, Charlie? Is that, or Mike, Mr. DeSantis, is anything you have to add?
The only thing I would add is that we've been in discussion with DEP regarding this, and really, there's three options. You can adopt it, you can reject it, or you can do nothing. If you do nothing, we're going to be bugging you because DEP just told us we need to get people to make a decision, one or the other. If you don't adopt it, as Mr. Norsini stated, you'll be required to work on your alternatives for effluent disposal. This is DEP's regulations, not Delcora's, not Aqua's. Everybody has a 537 plan. Solicitor Rice nailed it very well. So all we're asking is, it's certainly the township's priority to decide to do whatever they want. We're just here to tell you what the various options are and what it means if you don't or if you do adopt.
I understood, but again, the way you phrased it is you have to change your report before a deal closes. And really, that's not it. What you're saying is we need the township to commit to stay in the current system. And that by adopting this report, that's what you're doing. So I see it as fundamentally different, for different things, but I think I understand the issue now. I do wish that we would clarify what this, what they're looking at, and it was not just a name change. So thank you.
Is there any additional commissioner comment?
Mr. DeSantis and Mr. Hurst, thank you both for coming on.
Our pleasure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Hearing none. Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? I will call the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks again.
Moving on to item 3D, Stormwater Management Waiver Request, 231 Shimoney Road, Grading Permit Application Number 202471. Is there a motion? Asking again, is there a motion?
A second.
I hear a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Do we have anyone on the line who can tell us about this?
Commissioner, we have Mark Padula, who's the engineer for the applicant. In short order, the ground here does not meet our permeability requirements of the township. This is what has been before the commissioners in the past for this exact reason. The residents here aren't here before you to say they do not wish to meet the stormwater management ordinance. They are here to represent that they are unable to meet the infiltration requirements. I'll pass it off to Mr. Padula.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you for having us on the agenda this evening. As Steve said, we did do site testing, and the site testing came back that the ground would not accept the runoff. The property's relatively flat. We looked at all of their alternatives. We discussed the project with Andrew Zerby. And Andrew and his team recommended that we request the waiver from you guys since we can't meet the requirement.
So that's actually in our ordinance, commissioners. If they are unable to meet a requirement, they are required to go to the Board of Commissioners to request a waiver. So it's somewhat mechanical in that respect.
Are the boys in the meeting here?
Yeah, Mrs. Boyd, Carly Boyd's here. Vince had a prior engagements this evening, cannot be here. So Carly is here.
Okay.
So Commissioner, we're talking about 700, the folks are going to demolish the house to the existing foundation, come up from there. But the crux of the matter is, we're talking about, there was a little spreadsheet I made, a little table on the memo, roughly 722 square feet of new impervious. So this would fall under one of our infiltration trenches, whether it be filled with stone or some other device that would manage the water over one inch of a certain area to meet the requirements. So just to put it in context, it is 722 square feet of new impervious that they're required to address.
Are you, Mark, are you suggesting that they do a rain garden or some kind of retention or rain barrels? Or is it just nothing?
We certainly looked at that, Commissioner, and thank you for the question. Because of the flatness, once the water gets to the surface, the elevated, the ground, once we put it below grade, we can't get it to discharge at daylight again on our site. So rain garden, if we put a rain garden in, it would have to be located at the lowest spot on the property. And by the time you filter the water through the amended soil and collect it again in the bottom and try to get it to discharge the surface, we're going to be three to four feet below existing grade at the lowest spot on the property.
Is the property above, is it in the floodplain?
It is not.
Okay. And is it downhill from, is it directly downhill from an adjoining property or the other property's flat?
There's no runoff basically coming onto our property from any neighbor's property. So the other property is relatively flat.
Okay, so, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So Steve, so I thought that you were saying that they were doing structures to improve water quality in lieu of stormwater infiltration. And is that not the case, or is that...
What I described was if the ground was able to infiltrate properly to meet our ordinance requirements, they would be putting a pit, a stone bed in the ground because they can't. So if they were to do so, it would fill up and there would be no infiltration, and it would be rendered useless. So they can't meet that requirement. That's why they're here before you tonight.
Well, Steve, I know. We've had, we've had 100 of these, whatever it is. So what, is there, so you're not asking for anything in lieu of that requirement?
I was just going to say, so I understand about the rain garden as Mark put forth. My thought would be the resident could at least put rain barrels in or come up with another idea through Mark to give the commissioners. They're not required to by our ordinance, but we do think it is appropriate to provide some, albeit small, alternative to the fact that you're unable to infiltrate. And rain barrels are a relatively easy way to do so, as well as, again, if the applicant is understanding that a rain garden proper, as Mr. Padula noted, designed, won't work. But there are plantings that could be done on the surface for runoff quality and things like that. So you consider the rain barrels and specific plantings in the area where you're going to discharge the rain barrels for water quality.
Steve, but the issue to me isn't more impervious. It's that, I'm sorry, the issue to me is that it's... Steve, but the issue to me isn't more impervious. It's that, I'm sorry, the issue to me is that it's it's uh, the soil is no good, but then it's more impervious on top of it. So and and the rain barrels are only gonna come off the house. I don't know how big the property is.
Right, rain barrel, the idea is there is 722 square feet of new impervious aside from the house going up. So a rain barrel, the idea is we'll take that X amount of runoff from the roof. Those barrels will store it and then the homeowner can release it at a slower rate over time.
But if the soil is no good anyway, it's not. Right, how bad's that soil, Mark? I mean, you can't dump.
Zero.
Zero. So so that alright, so let me let me let me try to get this. So you're dumping water into soil that's not gonna accept any water?
Well, it doesn't mean that the surface after a storm, after things have dried out, that the surface, I mean, it's not a swamp, it's not a marsh, the surface will take some runoff. And the idea is that you use the rain barrel for watering your plants or slow release. I'm not saying it's a perfect, it's a perfect setup, but there's not a whole, they can't meet our ordinance, so they need to come up with some other idea. It's not a requirement, it's a request.
Miss, Mrs. Boyd, typically when people come with this, we typically ask them, what else would they be willing to do to try to mitigate the concerns that Commissioner Farley and and I share? When we do these things, as you you're aware, we we make the flooding worse in in downstream areas by adding that much more water to our flood uh, conditions when they do occur. And so typically, we we do ask the applicant to to see what they would be willing to do um, in light of that concern and also in light of the fact that other neighbors do not have the same soil situation. And and if if they are able to perk, they have to spend 10 or 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 10 or $12,000 to build the structure that you're asking not to build. So I think that that's what we're, the message I'm trying to convey right now to you and and Mr. Padula.
Well, maybe I could answer that for Carly, if you're okay with that, Commissioner. The rain garden, I think Steve nailed it on the head. We really can't do that. And may maybe, you know, we might be able to use the money that we would have spent and maybe contributed to the township to possibly do improvements elsewhere. Uh, the rain barrels, um, I think I think Commissioner Farley said, not going to hold a lot of water. I don't really think it's going to alleviate any of the issues that you're concerned with. Um, plantings on the site, it's it's a smaller property, it's just under a half an acre. Um, it's it's mostly grass area and there's some some trees around the perimeter and such. Um, adding adding landscaping is something I think we would seriously consider. But again, I'm not really sure that that would uh, have a have a big effect because I think like Steve said, if we put anything underground, it'll fill up the first time. It may de-water over a long, long period of time, but we got two storms back to back. There there'd be nothing there the second storm. So, yeah, we we've discussed a lot of options. We're open to trying anything, but we want to try something that's going to be effective.
Steve, if the house was built on the um, existing foundation with this issue, is it, I guess my question is, is it because they're going for a larger house on the same lot that they're running into the um, impervious issue?
So the house that's coming up from the existing foundation is exempt from having to do stormwater management, right? So this is just a small portion of 722 square feet of uh, if you look at the table, it was walkways. Um, sorry. Uh, driveway, 184 square feet patio and walkways. So maybe we could do this. So we have another meeting in two weeks. And we could ask the applicant to come up with, I know Mark is struggling because there there's not a whole lot to do. But to be creative and come back to the board with some options uh, to do. Again, the ordinance doesn't require them to do that. The ordinance requires them to come to you to request a waiver. But we could ask the applicant and I'll gladly work with you, Mark, uh, to see if we could come up with something in lieu of the stormwater management that won't work. And it's it's not going to be perfect for all the reasons we spoke of, but maybe there's some things we can come up with.
Mrs. Boyd and Mr. Padula, if you would do that, I would greatly appreciate that effort. I think that that would uh, really be something that would show a a good good faith effort um, to the rest of the board. So I I would encourage you to to accept that proposal from Commissioner, uh, from Mr. Norsini.
I think I can speak for the boys that we would accept that and look forward to working with Steve on that.
I'm gonna go actually.
Motion to table?
We we do. I, before we get that though, Lisa, if I could, I'd just like to say, I'm going to go one step farther than Commissioner Booker, Mark, and suggest that this is an area which is hard hit by stormwater. I hear complaints from residents on Shimonie, particularly just a little bit downstream from this house a lot. And it looks to me, I'm trying to do math on a calculator while trying to find my meeting packet online, which clearly I'm not very good at, so maybe don't trust me on this. But it looks like this was a 30% increase over the existing impervious surface, which while acceptable in the zoning district is still a big change for an area that's hard hit, or what you tell me is soil, which is totally valueless in terms of stormwater acceptance. So I'm I'm going to say, while I echo Rich's sentiment that we'd like some kind of good faith change, I think that I'm going to have to insist for my vote anyway, that there in addition to that be some kind of actual something more than good faith, not a token. I want to see something that will actually improve the infiltration drainage, um, whatever you got on this soil. And I will also just say, um, although I don't have a conflict and I intend to vote on this when it comes up. Mark, you testified for me in the past as an expert, so I have total faith in your ability to find a solution here.
Jack, I appreciate that. If there's a solution to be found, I think Steve and I will find it, but sometimes there isn't. Um, I'm open to any ideas that make sense and can solve any issue. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll motion to table.
Is there a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion to table passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll see you guys at the next meeting.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Talk to you tomorrow, Mark. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Moving to uh, item 3E, continued from 22221, motion to direct the township's solicitor to enter an appearance on behalf of the township and oppose the zoning application number 3088. The applicant, BDN 250 King of Prussia 1 LP, property located at 250 King of Prussia Road and Zone PLO, Land Laboratory Office. The applicant is seeking a variance from section 280 dash 64 spot C to permit Romanet 1, a setback of 43.39 feet plus or minus opposite King of Prussia Road 2 and Romanet 2, a setback of 17.17 feet plus or minus opposite Radnor Chester Road. Variance from section 280 dash 64 spot B to allow a building structure area of 42.4% plus or minus. A variance from section 280 dash 64 spot B to allow a landscape area of 27.8% and any other relief deemed necessary for the project. Is there a second for the motion? Okay, Rich, this is yours. Where where do we stand?
Um, well, as you read there, the uh, this is for 250 King of Prussia Road and this is the old Penn facility. So I think everybody's familiar with it, but it's in the corner of Radnor Chester Road and King of Prussia Road. And as everybody knows, Penn has moved out of that and they're in their new building that they built. And the one, and that's at 145 King of Prussia Road and 145 King of Prussia continues to be under construction. We still have the hotel to build there as well as the uh, the new office building, which will also be part of Brandywine's portfolio. And I I do want to make the point, I support Brandywine. Uh, they're, it's a very good company with very good management and um, uh, Jeff Devoto and the folks and they're very good people and I want to be helpful for to them whenever I can. I'm sorry, they moved out of Radnor. Um, but um, I understand the impetus that that drove that, but um, they are a a a resident by their, all their buildings and they are a good corporate uh, citizen, so I really appreciate them. However, in this case, for this new uh, it'll be three level parking garage that they want to build on their existing um, on their existing parking lot. I'm 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 requesting that we send counsel to oppose their application for waivers at zoning hearing. Reason being, first is impervious cover. They are asking to be allowed to increase impervious cover at this already overdeveloped site to 72.2%. And they're only allowed to have 55% under current zoning. 45% must be landscaped, so they're they're already way over the the impervious cover allowed and they want to in to further make it that even worse. In addition, the same thing with building area, they they are only allowed 30% building area on the site and they're requesting 42.2%. Um, all of these are against stormwater issues and and could impact um, our ability to um, to mitigate the the floods and and even if not, they're still way over, it's an old site and they're still way over the impervious coverage. And and we don't, we don't waive the impervious coverage requirements. Um, even when there are stormwater management facilities to be provided. Um, it's just not beneficial to the township, so impervious cover is the first reason. Secondly, there's really not a hardship here. This building, as everyone knows, has been operating with the 300 and some and 70 odd spots since the 1990s. Penn used it for decades. And so the parking obviously has worked in the past with the prior owner. Um, in addition, as everyone knows, the prior owner, Penn, they had mostly medical offices, which we all know has a much higher parking requirement because of the additional turnover vis a vis general office space. Now, this developer is saying that they will have probably, probably, they don't know for sure, but probably have more general office. So their their existing parking should work even better for them if that's the case than it did for Penn. So there's there's really not a hardship because the building works at this size with this parking lot as it is. And if they're, if they're unhappy with it, they haven't proposed making a smaller building. Um, and that's something that they could look at. Now, what the applicant is saying is that they will decrease their nonconformity in the parking. Um, their rough calculations are they need something like 900 spaces to be in compliance with the PLO zoning in the area and they only have about 373. But but again, even even if they do what they're planning, they still don't come into compliance. And while they are slightly mitigating the the parking nonconformity, they're doing that by violating four other zoning requirements. They're not even close to the setback requirements on this site. Their their setbacks for a building structure is 150 feet. And they're within 40 or 50 feet for this new facility, so they're they're way, way too close to to the boundaries. And um, they're, in addition to, they're, they have a building that and it's been used for decades as it is. So mitigation of the of the parking, while perhaps you can make the argument, I would say that's for the benefit of the landlord, not for the constituents, not for our township. But even if it is for some of our township folks to get that little bit by violating four other zoning requirements, including impervious, lot coverage and building setbacks, that that doesn't make any sense to obviate four just to make it a little bit better on one. Now, the applicant, I think, could build a, they could conceivably, conceivably build a parking structure that would meet the setback requirements. And if they did, I think it would be very much more difficult to take any kind of issue with it. Um, and so I I I think that they could build a a smaller structure either in the same place that conformed with setbacks and conformed with um, our other requirements of um, at least without, without making the other requirements worse, or they could bu- build it over the existing interior parking. This facility has interior parking within the existing footprint. So I I would suggest that that's something that they could look at as well. Uh, but finally, uh, not directly at issue here is is traffic. Now, this isn't for this discussion, this is about uh, showing a hardship in waivers for for the zoning and the PLO. But obviously, there is a great concern that they've been using 370 some parking spaces for for decades. If they add a little under 200 new spaces, that they have an opportunity where we could well see a lot more traffic. And remember, King of Prussia Road, as I've told everyone many times over the years, King of Prussia Road, by virtue of the 145 King of Prussia Road uh, development with Penn, their new facility is adding 7,000 trips a day on King of Prussia Road. It's going from about 13,000 to 20,000 trips a day already without this facility, without any additional traffic. Also, uh, Penn put in 1,400 new spaces in their two parking garages at 145. So they're they're asking for another parking structure in this area. And it's a great, great probability in my view that we're going to see more traffic because the the existing 370 some spot surface lot really kind of limited the the traffic that could come in and out. So that was kind of a natural buffer. But again, that's that's not for what we're talking about today. It's something that I think is is very important um, that you all consider. Also, I'd ask you to consider our King of Prussia Road Bridge, which as we all know, continues despite our best efforts and huge amounts of signs, it's continues to get hit once every six weeks or so by a truck. That bridge is within a few hundred feet of this facility. So doing anything that's going to increase the movement on King of Prussia Road and Radnor Chester Road, I think, has the potential for for problems. And we know with all the times that that bridge has been hit and continues to be hit, that it's dangerous. Commissioner Abel often talks to me, he says, we we have to get rid of that walkway underneath that bridge at King of Prussia Road because somebody's going to be in there and the truck will hit it and they could get killed if they're walking. They could get seriously injured or 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 uh, anything could happen to somebody walking in that in that underpass there. Um, my concern is that we remove it, we continue to have people using that just on foot without the Jersey barriers. So I don't, I don't raise that issue to make anybody frightened or to be a fear monger or to talk about um, issues that could happen. I I raise it because it's a definite concern that we have and that we we can, we will continue to have for years. Um, and it's um, very close to this facility. So I I think that we should um, take that in consideration as well because adding additional traffic is going to be a a continued and even greater strain on the infrastructure that we already are overburdening with the massive development we have at 145 King of Prussia Road. Um, and finally, planning commission reviewed this uh, this past week. They uh, they did not um, make any uh, motion on this. They they remain neutral. Uh, they did not, and we know the planning commission certainly knows how to say that they recommend something if they want to. Um, and they did not say that they wanted to recommend this. So what I would ask is that we, and I I'm I'm willing to reach and reach and work at work, we reach out to the developer and work with them on finding something that maybe they can, they can, um, if they want to do it, that they can live with. Um, but to me, this is just too big of an of an ask. And I'm I'm asking us to approve sending Solicitor Rice or one of his team to oppose the variances because I I think they're excessive for this site for the reasons provided.
Any additional commissioner comment?
Take it, but I, you know, I I I've provided the information I had. Take it, but I, you know, I, I've, I've provided the information I have.
Hearing none, is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Looks like five to two. Moving on to-
Mr. Larkin, I, I was trying to make a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I don't see you in the attendees. George, are you a panelist here?
Uh, yes, I was trying to.
Oh, I'm sorry. I see you now, George. So just to clarify, I look for public comment in the attendees. If you're a panelist and you've got a comment, it's easier just to unmute yourself. Otherwise I have to jump back and forth between screens. I've already got like eighteen different screens up. My monitor is big, which is why it looks like I'm always looking all over the place. But it's not that big. So George, I apologize. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I, I didn't want to interrupt while everybody was speaking. So thank you. I would ask for your reconsideration after, I'm here with Joe Trainer of Brandywine and we have Alex Tweedy, who's the engineer. I'd like to respond briefly to Mr. Booker's comments and then Joe would briefly describe this project. I think Mr. Booker's comments were, you know, not fairly characterizing the application with regard to setbacks. The setbacks in the PLO district are two hundred feet from each street or one hundred fifty feet from each street and two hundred feet from each property line. That's bigger than the entire property. So yes, there is setback relief here, but the setbacks consume the entire property. So there's no place on the property, including the existing building, that anything could be built. And you'll see a plan where you can see that this parking structure has been tucked in the back, adjacent to the bus parking lot and adjacent to the parking lot for an adjoining office building. So yes, those are two of the four measures of relief. But that would be needed for anything. With regard to the issue of landscaping and impervious coverage, yes, it is being increased slightly, but a very small amount. I believe less than four percent and stormwater management will be done. The property is severely underparked. Brandywine has purchased the property and made a large investment in Radnor Township. And as Joe Trainer will tell you, they feel it's important to find a way to add more parking. They did that by building a parking structure primarily over existing parking, which will allow for less impervious coverage. With regard to the building coverage variance, the building itself is not being increased at all. That also goes to traffic. Technically, this parking deck counts as building coverage, even though it's not a building, it's a, there's a small increase there. So I'd like if Joe Trainer could show you a couple of the images. We believe that this dimensional relief, you know, is warranted, it's relatively minor, will allow this old building to be updated. I disagree with the characterization that the building as it was worked fine. I understand there has, there used to be valet service there. It's a very good thing to update the, the parking, add some more parking here. People have complained about that for years and it'll be a good thing to modernize this building. If trainer could come on and make a brief comments.
George, thanks for the summary and commissioners, thank you for your time tonight. So as George mentioned and as Commissioner Booker, Booker mentioned, this with the former Penn Med facility, we acquired the building after Penn moved out and into their new facility at one forty-five King of Pressure Road. The building is mostly vacant with the exception of one tenant and we're simply looking to retenant the building. And while the building is well situated and has good bones, there are some repairs, renovations, modernizations that need to be made in order to retenant it. The biggest part is, and what we're here for today is, and what we are in planning commission for and looking to go in front of zoning clearing board next week on, is to add structured parking to a, a site that is deficient from both a code and a market perspective. And Alex Tweedy, our civil engineer is on and he can answer, he can pull up the plans and, and answer some of the, the more technical questions. But the overall goal was to add the parking, solve for that deficiency in a way that was least impactful to the site. So it's a relatively small structured parking deck, as small as we could get it, while still maintaining functionality. We've looked to set it as far back from the road as possible and that's part of the, the, the lot line variant with, which Alex can, can bring you through. And really just have as, as minimal an impact on the existing property as well as the surrounding property as possible. So right now we're in for zoning approval and that's really the discussion, I believe, for, for this meeting tonight. We do anticipate if we get zoning relief. So if we get zoning relief, we will be back in front of you for land development. And as Commissioner Booker, you mentioned, things like traffic, stuff like that is, might be more conducive to discuss during the land development process and address during the land development process.
Joe, could you show the images that you have?
George, this is Alex. I was trying to show the images, but the share screen is disabled for us. I don't know if somebody can allow us to share screens. It looks like who can share is open to all panelists. It's available now. It wasn't. I will share. Thank you. Joe, would you like me to run through the, the engineering details with the drawings now?
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Tweedy with Land Corps Engineering, civil engineer for the applicant. I believe the summary was, was already given with the, the project. I'll get into a little bit more of the details. As everyone's aware, this is the existing building. It should be noted that this building was built in the fifties, predated the zoning and has gone through numerous iterations of zoning since then. I believe it was originally C three and then became PLO. So the setbacks are new to the project and were imposed on this property after the development had already occurred and after the site was already laid out, which also leads to many of the existing nonconformities and the issues with existing impervious coverage, existing building coverage and existing setbacks. As you can see, it's a unique property line. This property was originally a single parcel with the adjoining two fifty-nine building and then it was subdivided off. But as you can tell, the, the property lines are unique with some cross access easements. And the property lines don't follow any natural circulation route. They don't follow the existing roadway, et cetera, which also is another hardship that aggravates the existing nonconformities of the parking in the building and thus the proposed parking structure as well. If you're not familiar with the property, the main entrance is right here on the eastern side. The main parking field, as we discussed, is on the eastern portion of the property. The main entrance comes in off King of Pressure Road and the main circulation route is through this entrance currently that comes through the property and goes to the front door, main access here. This circulation route is important because one of the issues when we were laying out this site that leads to much of this relief is placement of the parking structure and why we put the parking structure where we did. That decision was twofold. One, as George and Joe mentioned, to tuck it in the back corner, allow it to be shielded by the building for King of Pressure Road and Radnor Chester Road and allow this existing streetscape and street trees along King of Pressure Road to act as a buffer and to set that parking structure as far back away from those street frontages as we could. But also, we do not want to build a parking garage over top of this existing circulation route, both for patron use and more importantly, emergency access use. We want free flow up to the building from King of Pressure Road and Radnor Chester Road via the existing circulation patterns to not be encumbered by this parking garage, which led to our proposal, which is shown here. As you can see, this existing surface drive is being maintained and the parking garage is set south of that circulation route. So it's to not have circulation through the garage, both for patrons and emergency vehicles. It allows a surface only circulation pattern to still occur. And then you can choose to go into the garage, but you are not forced to for parking. We thought that was a very important design consideration. As shown, the existing street trees are preserved here, parking garage set far back from King of Pressure Road. And also set back far from Radnor Chester Road and the majority of the garage is screened from the building and tucked back in this existing corner. As noted, the, two of the reliefs are the setbacks, which are along this property line and along this southern property line. And then as George also noted, the third relief is the building and structure coverage. It should be noted that once again, that standard was made after this property was built. This property is very low and broad. As you can see the footprint of it, there are some areas of this building that's only one story or two story. This code allows up to three stories. So the majority of the relief needed for the building coverage is because of the format and construction of the original building that used up a lot of the property area for the square footage because it was built on one story or two stories in this portion. So once again, that is a function of the existing nonconformity because this building was built in the fifties prior to zoning and then gone through a, a C three zoning classification and then was rezoned most recently to PLO. So this building has a true clear hardship of its construction preceding zoning classification and then having more strict standards applied after the fact. So we believe it is very appropriate to seek that relief. And then I think the most critical one that was brought up was the impervious coverage. And I want to speak a little bit to that. We spent a lot of time trying to look at ways to not encroach on the existing landscape area with this building. This southern corner is where the parking garage leaves the footprint of the existing parking field and goes over into an existing landscape area. This area is generally the portion of relief we're seeking. This is a function of two things. What we talked about, the main circulation route needing to be preserved for emergency access and patron access through the center without forcing somebody to go through the garage. But then also the structure of the garage in order to ramp from floor to floor and get the sufficient clearances needed for clear heights for parking and vehicular circulation through the building. This ramp has to be a minimum length to get sufficient slope on it to be able to park along the ramp and to be able to construct the garage with sufficient clearances from floor to floor. This garage is designed at the minimum footprint. We can build it to get the ramping necessary for this garage to function structurally and with clearances. So we looked at many different scenarios, but this is the smallest garage we could find. And due to the requirement to keep this circulation path open, this is the only portion of the property in which that building fits. And therefore we had to have this minor encroachment into the landscape area. I think we, this is just an arrow photo of the existing condition as well. I think you're all familiar with the building. As you can see, this is the one story section where it takes up, you know, a lot of property area for one story for the square footage. And this is the main parking field. And here is the circulation route that we are preserving. This is a rendering of the building with the parking garage shown. As you can see from Radnor Chester Road, it is mostly screened by the building. Pressure Road, it is screened by this nice existing tree line and tucked far back in the site to be as least intrusive to the roadways as we can. And this is just a streetscape view showing the existing tree line in the main entrance. And then how it would look with the parking structure in the rear being screened by that existing trees, those existing trees. That's a, a high level summary of the relief and why we need it. I am available for any questions if they're needed.
Mr. Tweedy, what will become of the existing parking garage bordering on the southwest corner on Radnor and Chester?
The parking garage, it's internal to the building?
Correct.
There are no modifications to the building being proposed. So we are keeping-
That parking, that parking space will, will continue as parking space?
We are adding parking to the property. We are not taking away the structured parking in the, the, the four story tower, the two levels of internal, nor are we modifying any of the existing surface parking along Radnor Chester or the side. The only one area is we are putting some new generators in for the electrical upgrades that this place. I believe it's about nine parking stalls along the ring road, but everything else is being preserved as is.
Thank you.
Mr. Tweedy, can I ask, is there, so I, I understand the circulation path you have around the, around the property. You are proposing, there's no entrance or exit onto Radnor Chester Road, is there? There's still, that's still not going to be accessible?
We're not making any modifications to the ring road or main circulate, entrance points. We are, we are, I mean, as clear as we can say, we are literally building a parking garage or parking structure over top of the existing parking and keeping all the other infrastructure the same.
Thank you.
And Joe, Joe can speak to it, but they are going to refurbish the building to make it look better and more up to date.
Yeah, we, we are planning, planning renovations to the building and its existing footprint. So Commissioner, Commissioner Underly to answer your question on the, which Alex did, on the existing parking, that's remaining as is. We're planning to do things like, you know, new roof, I'd say some interior renovations, new HVAC systems, which are, the existing systems are, are far outdated. And then we're also proposing to do a new glass skin on the building. But also maintaining within the footprint, main footprint and really just bringing it up to today's standard. No change to, no expansion of the, the building occupiable square footage. We're actually looking to, to reduce it a little bit. There's a small appendage that kind of looks like an afterthought that we're taking off, but really remaining the bulk, the bulk of the property or the bulk of the building to remain as is with renovations in place.
Okay. Is there any additional commissioner comment?
Hearing none, I will ask, is there any additional public comment?
Yeah, hey, Jack, we, we already voted. So what are we doing with the five to vote?
Because we had someone who wanted to comment from the public, we have to scratch it and start over again.
Okay.
Mr. Sherry, you had your hand up.
You have an official board vote. Stop muting me. Five to two. There's been no motion or any move from the parliamentarian to invalidate the vote. And by the way, Commissioner Larkin, weren't you in the minority on that vote? Five to vote, Commissioner Booker's motion carries. And now, due to your own disorganization, you allowed a presentation to occur after the vote? And now there's going to be a revote? Don't you have to do something to invalidate that five to two vote or put it to the board? That seems like an absolutely atrocious way to run a meeting. That motion carried five to two. Larkin, the chair, doesn't realize that somebody doesn't comment. And now without any action of the board to invalidate that official five to two vote, you are now revoting? If I was in the majority of that five to two vote, I'd ask for some clarification as to what you're doing right now. Because it seems like there was board action and then due to Larkin's ineptitude.
Thank you, Mr. Sherry. We're not going to have any more ad hominem comments. Mr. Rice?
Yeah, Commissioner, the, the vote stands. If the board wants to reconsider the vote, there, there would need to be a motion to reconsider that vote. But the five to two vote stands. Mr. Brosman made his comment on, you know, what the plan is. If, if that compels the board to reconsider its vote, then someone's going to need to make a motion to reconsider the vote and what that reconsideration would be. So that's, that's the next step.
And with respect, I would ask the board consider that motion, because we did not get to make a comment through no fault of anybody's, it's technology.
Is there anyone who wants to make such a motion? Hearing none, I suspect that that tells us where we would have ended up had we revoked, so we can move on. Moving to item three F, discussion of proposed Garrett Hill overlay zoning revisions. Sean, this is you.
Yeah, thank you. So this is just something that has been talked about at nauseam for years. I had, I put it in my newsletter, I put it online on Nextdoor, on my Facebook pages. I had a meeting, I had the first Zoom meeting where, which was actually done in the Radnorshire room and on Zoom. So anyone that had a phone, internet could get there, could speak to this. I've heard next to, you know, no one really having any kind of major, you know, having any kind of major, you know, not wanting to approve this, I guess, what I want to say. And I think that it's time that we ask John Rice to put, you know, print something up and then have planning take a look at it. The neighbors have spoken. Here's a, in the packet, petitions, so I don't know what more we can do. We can talk this to death, but I think that we need to take some actions. The neighbors want this, our business district is struggling. Outdoor dining, I think, is important and taking those 19 homeowners who were disenfranchised, making that right. I think the time has come. So with that, John, if you can kind of speak to that and maybe speak to how you got eight houses or eight, pardon me, eight seats. I know a bunch of the residents and business owners want to know that, but I want to let you take that from here.
Okay. The, what's in front of the board are three relatively minor amendments to your zoning code. In discussing this with Kevin Kachansky, you know, we came up with these three areas that would need to basically accomplish two things. One is to increase the height of buildings in the Garrett Hill neighborhood part of the overlay. It would just be that part of it from 30 to 35. And then to permit outdoor dining in Garrett Hill, which is currently prohibited under the existing outdoor dining regulations, which apply everywhere else. So number two would permit outdoor dining up to a maximum of eight seats, subject to fire and building code compliance. And I think the thought there was that Garrett Hill area is significantly different than, than downtown Wayne. There's a little bit tighter, smaller buildings. So provided that fire and building code compliance and Egress was met, you could have eight seats. Anything beyond that would be subject to the existing regulations in 115.4, which is fairly detailed in terms of outdoor dining currently. So that's the second part of this. That was sort of a, a judgment call. We talked about six seats, we talked about eight seats without a whole lot of regulation involved in that in Garrett Hill. And then anything larger than that would kick it up to the existing outdoor dining regulations. And then the last paragraph three just removes the prohibition in the existing ordinance as to Garrett Hill, which basically prohibits outdoor dining in Garrett Hill under the current regulation. So if the board's inclined to move this forward, the motion would authorize my office to draft a zoning amendment. We would circulate that to the planning commission and that would start the process to the township planning commission and the county planning commission.
Just sorry, just one question, John. So, you know, and the big, the, the big restaurant that would benefit this would be Flippin' Bally's. They would be able to have more than eight seats, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make that, make that known, because that's a, a big, a big concern. They, they handled about 20, 25 seats recently in the tent and there was not a problem. So I just, I know that, I got a call from Angie. She looks like she is on here as well. So I just want to make sure that that's going to
So Sean, can you clarify that for me? I'm not sure I'm understanding the eight seats then. If it's beyond eight seats, up to eight seats, eight, and eight top table, what, what are
Sure.
Well, Sean, let me, let me
Go ahead, John.
So, so currently in the township zoning ordinance, you have, it's section 115.4, you have detailed outdoor dining regulations dealing with things like furniture, type of furniture, umbrellas, fairly detailed. And that was drafted at the time with downtown Wayne in mind. And Garrett Hill was specifically excluded from that outdoor dining ordinance. So what this does in the breakdown between eight and then over eight is that up to eight, you only have to meet the fire and building code compliance part of section 115.4. And then over eight, you have to meet the rest of the regulations that are currently on the books. You know, that's, that's the breakdown. And that was just a, a ballpark in discussing this with, with Kevin that made some sense in terms of the, the physical features that are in Garrett Hill versus Wayne and the areas that are available for outdoor dining. So that's the breakdown. So yes, you could do over eight, there's just more regulations involved in doing over more than eight in Garrett Hill.
Some of those regulations are what? I'm sorry, I haven't read the full code on this and not up to speed.
Parking and setbacks, the type is done, indicated the type of umbrellas and furnishings that are required in there. This would still be required to go through our designer review board for review and still get all of the applicable reviews from our health division and from the code compliance. But this was an effort to allow some sort of outdoor dining in an area that's a little bit tighter than what we see in Wayne, without having to go through any kind of zoning hearing board relief because of the setbacks that are established.
And why was Garrett Hill originally left out of section, out of this section?
Well, we, the initial outdoor, the initial outdoor dining regulation was just in Wayne. And I want to say in 2012, 2013, we amended it to be township wide. I think there were some concerns at that point in time. A month or two later, a subsequent amendment was passed to remove it from Garrett Hill. For a variety of reasons, the residents in that area had thought and the commissioners at the time that it was prudent to remove it. And that kind of is where we stand today.
Sean, do you mind if I ask a question? So what does this do with regards to parking? If we're adding more, you know, outdoor dining, so more space, you know, more capacity? Or does it replace capacity inside and move it outside? Is that what it's doing? So it's taking capacity from outside and allowing it in, or inside and allowing it outside?
No, there's, there's no swap in, in the capacity. The, the main outdoor dining regulations, the first 12 seats you get for free without having to park. And then there's, it's a graduated increase in the number of seats outside will then provide a gradual increase to the number of parking spaces that you would have to provide. But the first 12 seats, I believe, are provided in our outdoor dining code without having to provide any additional parking spaces.
So we're adding seating, but when we don't need to add parking spaces up until 12 after 12? Okay, so what about that also combined with the adding the added height to the building? So presumably added height to buildings maybe means more people living in a building. Is this, can these be rentals? Like what, you know, could it be a building they build and then rent to Villanova students or something like that? That could impact parking as well?
Sure, so the increase in height is in the neighborhood section. It wouldn't necessarily apply to the commercial properties for restaurants. The owners could rent them out. Trying to rent to students could be challenging because of the amount of student homes that we have down there and the code restrictions on the spacing between student homes. So there are a lot on Garrett Avenue that are nonconforming because they predate the current codes. But trying to establish new student homes, A could be difficult from the code standpoint. B would still have to go through a special exception through the zoning board process to establish a, a new student home if there were a, a property or two that could manage to get it in.
So the height, the height addition is only for residential, it's not for the the business district area, I guess.
Yeah, from what I understand, it's just in the Garrett Hill neighborhood section and not on the Conestoga Road portion.
So you really don't think
Sorry, Lisa, no, I think that you can, so say Garrett Hill, not Garrett Hill. If Conestoga Pizza wanted to go as high as 35 feet, they're allowed to, correct?
I thought I heard from John that it was the, the Garrett Hill neighborhood section, but again, it hasn't been
The Garrett Hill neighborhood section on the south side can only go as high as 30 feet. But the businesses that are one story could go as high as 35 feet.
Under, you mean, under the existing zoning?
Yeah, so it's, so when add, you're not adding any height to any of these buildings. If they want it to hit 35, that's the current zoning. It's about 19 houses on the south side of Garrett Avenue. And most of them aren't, most of them, or some of them are actually over 35 feet or 35 feet, because this happened before the overlay changed that. It's just an issue of dealing with the, the people that were living there and they're disenfranchised. Because now on the north side, they can go as high as 35 feet, but the south side is only 30 feet.
You just said that most of the homes are 35 feet. Did you, wait, I'm sorry.
Some of them are, no, 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 some, some of them are, you're right, some of them are, not most. Some of them are, and the ones that aren't didn't elect to have, have their homes be, didn't elect to have, have this on their homes. It's, it's being disenfranchised.
So back to the, oh, I'm sorry.
So the, the Garrett Hill overlay includes within it sub areas. So what Sean's saying is the sub areas are all currently at 35. And I'm, and I'm looking at Conestoga Road, which is a sub area, it's 35. And I'm also looking at the Garrett Hill, the Rosemont Business Campus sub area, that's 35. So what we're doing here is changing the Garrett Hill neighborhood sub area from 30 to 35. So that's the increase. The other ones, the mixed use district, which is the Garrett Hill G A district, that is currently at 30 feet. That's in 30 feet, that's sub area. Garrett Hill, this one GH hyphen N is at 30 feet. So this amendment is only dealing with the GH hyphen N sub area. Out of those, I think there's five sub areas. Sean, I believe that's what, we, we did talk about the sub areas.
Yeah, yes.
So this is being rewritten and it's only going to impact how many homes potentially?
About 19, maybe, maybe 10, maybe. And that's if they decide that they want to build an extra five feet. No one's going to knock their house down and say to get five more feet. But some of those houses, if, you know, if, if someone wants to come in or you know, they could, they could, they should be able to raise it to what is on the north side of, of Garrett Avenue. And it's basically a, a disenfranchisement. Why should, why it's an arbitrary dividing line, the trolley tracks? If you live south of the trolley tracks, it's 30 feet. If you live north of the trolley tracks, it's 35 feet.
Does it create, if you raise those houses, if you're able to, does it create like one of those like really because like homes are close to the street there? Is it like creating one of those cavernous kind of things that you try to avoid?
It, it doesn't, I mean, does it do that on the north, does it do it on the north side of Lowry's or the north side of
They're spaced out more.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's still, it's still, I still don't see that it does it on the north side of Garrett Avenue.
So Sean, I'm just asking, because you always are, are very adamant on stormwater concerns and you know, share a lot of those concerns.
Yes, absolutely.
So what are the impacts in terms of stormwater?
Not, not much, because you can only build up. You, I mean, that, you're right, the houses are pretty close together. You can't, you can't go right or left, maybe you can go back a little bit, but you're really going up. There's really not much more you can do. So if you raise the, the, the height five feet, it's not going to affect stormwater or anything, because you're still on that existing, that existing whatever footprint. So the stormwater is going to be next to none, next to none, because you can only go up.
Sean, I have a question just about what, you know, I saw the signatures that you've presented. Thank you for that. You've obviously, you know, been in touch with a lot of the neighbors. So I guess my question is, you know, bumping a house up five feet is probably not giving an existing structure a major change. So I would guess that by allowing another five feet of height, perhaps we're encouraging sale of an original house for a teardown to build up higher. Like that, like the one that, that went on. So, you know, just from the neighbors or the folks who are interested in seeing this happen, do you get the sense that many of them are looking to do improvements on their own home? Are they looking to, you know, sell and move on, just
Yeah, so that's, that's a great point, Commissioner Maroney. So no, they shouldn't be disenfranchised. Your, your, your largest asset is your home. So why should my home be able to, you know, if, if two homes depreciate 20% a year, but mine, when I sell it, it finds out that, that's not the case and only appreciated 10% a year. I'm losing out and that's my biggest asset. So you're really hurting the people that, that don't have the, the nicest houses, we'll say, because they can't build as tall and they can't maximize their profits. The people that want this, the neighbors want this, the neighbors that live. And if you read, if you saw this, these are all the people that live in the overlay. It's from, you know, one, 100, basically the 100 block, block of Garrett Avenue. So these are the neighbors. Now, someone like me, I shouldn't tell someone that lives on Garrett Avenue how tall your house should be, especially after there was that, the overlay said, well, we're going to change it for the good of the neighborhood, you're disenfranchised. No, they didn't want it. And they're saying that they don't want it and they, they filled out this petition. You're only hurting those people that live there, because they can't, their home is their biggest investment. And if they don't get the resale value when they sell it, you know, they're going to be, they're going to be poorer for it, right? If everyone else's house increased 10% a year and, you know, and over seven years it doubles, but my house only went up 5% a year. Now, if I sell it, I'm, I'm, you know, I can't get, I didn't keep up with the market. I can't get the that, that's, that's my point. I don't know, does that answer your question or not?
Um, yes, it does, thank you.
Okay. And it's the neighbors that want it, not me.
What about the people who, if they sell and they tear down, they build 35 and then the guy is like stuck in the middle and doesn't want to sell and wants to live there?
That's fine, I mean, then that's fine, that, that happens. I, I, I live in Garrett Hill and I live on a street where there's twins and some, and I have neighbors complain to me, can they build a house this tall? And the answer is yes. I mean, we deal with it all the time. I, I guess, you know, people, some people are very lucky when they live on, you know, an acre plus of land. But those are the, those are the zoning codes. And, and if that's the case, they should be leveled throughout the township and throughout all of Garrett Hill, not on half a street that represents 19 houses. So make it a level playing field as far as I'm concerned. But don't, don't disenfranchise But don't, don't disenfranchise fifteen people, twenty people. That's, that's not right.
So I would, I was not on the board when they did the, the community engagement that led to the overlay. And I guess I would be quite interested in getting to the bottom of, of what that movement was about. I'm sure you have information on that. I'm sure that I could, you know, find people who are involved in it, but is there any way we can sort of bring a presentation of that work that was done forward?
So, so let me, let me just make a comment. So, yeah, I mean, that's been out there. It's the Garrett Hill overlay and it's available for you to read. But what I've done is I've had my own community meetings and I've invited all those people and all those people there, and I have gotten next to no negative feedback on it. What I have are people that live in that overlay that are affected, that are saying this is not fair. Why should someone else that lives a quarter mile away, a half a mile away, say how, how tall my house should be? That's, I mean, that's, let me just finish here. That's, that's absurd. It's not right. And they didn't have a fair, they didn't have a fair voice at those meetings. And they've, they've come to me about it. I've had the neighborhood meetings. I've gone door to door. Someone else went door to door with this. I put it in my newsletters. I put it all over. I don't know what more you want other than saying there's maybe three or four people that are still clinging to this overlay, which was outdated and a dinosaur when it was written. And they're saying, well, we want affordable housing in Garrett Hill. Terrific. Then you should sell your house for thirty cents on the dollar. Don't tell someone else what they should, what, what they should be allowed to do with their house. And, you know, and it's, it's not up to the neighbors to say what, you know, what, where the affordable housing should be. If you want them, we should contract HUD or another government agency to figure that out. This is just righting the wrong and it's nineteen houses when it comes to the height, when it comes to the outdoor dining, you know, the, the business district is, is in trouble. And I think we need to make it permanently. We tried it on a temporary basis and it's working well. We didn't have any complaints. You could ask the chief, you could ask Bill White, no complaints. And we need to make it permanent and these restaurants need to invest because we're going to be coming out of COVID. And they need to invest in, in their businesses. So, you know, and a lot of people that work at these restaurants live in Garrett Hill. So, you know, I mean, if, if you guys, you know, if the board doesn't want to do it, that's fine. But this is really something that should have been done and it's something that the neighbors want. I mean, how many attendees do we have? Eight. And, you know, I'm sure we have a couple of people that want to speak to it, but I have a petition and town hall meetings and you can go online and see them that, that, that say otherwise. So that's what I have.
So what's the ask?
The ask is to have John Rice draft a amendment and it goes to planning and if planning says, okay, we take a look at it. If they say, no, it's not okay, we look at the revisions. And I've incorporated the neighbors multiple times and I'll do it again once we get those revisions back and once John gets the amendment, but you know, it's, you know, it's time that we, that we bring Garrett Hill. Then we make them competitive with Wayne and with other parts of Laura Marion and other, other business districts where it's going to die. And, you know, when it dies, you have vacant, vacant buildings like Garrett Hill Pizza, which has been vacant for years and it's just an eyesore. So the board needs to decide.
Sorry, additional commissioner comment?
I, I was just going to say, I, I look at this package as really pro-business. And what Sean just talked about, the last few sentences is what seems to me is important item is to try to help and to invigorate that, that, that smaller business area of Radnor. And I, I think that this helps to do that. And I'm surprised there's so much community opposition. I do understand, and not to say there's a lot, but there is, there's, there is some vocal.
Next to none, Rich.
And so it, it, it's surprising to me that there is the opposite, there, there, there is as much negative commentary as, as I've heard, but I, I don't really see the houses, the height of houses as the issue. The real issue is can we, can we revitalize? Can we help the businesses in Garrett Hill? And to, to improve that situation? And I, I recognize that we want to have the people there and they want to have affordable housing and, and, and that's, and that's, that's fine. We have a Radnor, the land use plan provides for how, for all different zoning in, in the township. So I understand that as well. But one thing, Kevin, you said that the prior, some time ago, the board commissioners decided to change it. Can you put some more color around that? That, that change that they made back then?
Sure. So after the, and I want to say it was two thousand twelve timeframe, we had looked at, it was shortly after I came on board at the township, looked at expanding outdoor dining township wide. In that effort, we had included all business districts to allow for outdoor dining. Shortly thereafter, there were some concerns that were raised for the outdoor dining in Garrett Hill. So a subsequent amendment was passed. It was within a few months that specifically removed Garrett Hill from having outdoor dining.
Was that having to do with students or something?
I, I don't know. Again, it was two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen timeframe. I think the general thought was the original Garrett Hill ordinance did not include or allow for outdoor dining. So the thought was since it didn't, and a lot of effort from the community was put into creating the Garrett Hill ordinances, to keep it in that context.
And we don't really know what the rationale behind keeping it in that context was?
I, I don't. I just know that the, the individuals from the community that had worked and spent a lot of time and effort on creating the Garrett Hill master plan from two thousand and eight and that the Garrett Hill overlay district was concerned about further increasing outdoor dining. So it was subsequently removed.
Is there any additional commissioner comment?
Thank you.
Hearing none, is there any staff comment? This is not really a formal action item, but I'm going to ask for public comment on this. Roberta Winters, I see your hand is up. If you could, tell us what you're thinking.
Thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to provide input. I'm Roberta Winters, resident three, two, six Williams Road in Rosemont. As a member of the Garrett Hill community for many decades, I was involved in the many meetings that gave rise to the overlay district. Before approving the revisions for drafting into a formal agreement, I urge you to table discussion for tonight. And consider during the following, I appreciate the questions you're asking and I appreciate the passion of Mr. Farhi in supporting those residents that assign the petition. I would also ask someone to check those names on the petitions to see if they are an actual property owners or just people who live on the street. Now reviewing the documents and slides related to the Garrett Hill overlay district is found on the Radnor Township website, I think would be most instructive for all of you who are new commissioners. You will find renditions for outside dining, appropriate development, and more conceptual work done by professionals hired and immersed in the process that occurred more than a decade ago. This guidelines would be instructive to all of you. And if you talk to the former and current township officials who are involved, I think you would gain further insights. Second, I would like you to reflect on the importance of diverse neighborhoods with affordable housing that still exist in our township. Our historic community contributes much to the character of Radnor and its legacy. This is an area where first time owners and renters put down their roots. This is where teachers, nurses and essential workers have the means to live. This is where people elect to raise family, walk the public transit, enjoy town together in our parks and are acquainted with one another as neighbors. Take time to explore the area on foot. I noticed some of you have said things like, well, you know, the houses are closer together in this end than they are to the other. These things make a difference. You need to observe the transitions that are occurring as homes are being remodeled. Many changes have happened under the, under the provisions of the Garrett Hill overlay that gave regulations that predated the overlay modifications. They've, these have filled with non-conformities and because of the overlay district, they now have lots of latitude that they lacked before. Note that the structures that exceed the thirty-foot height limit restrictions became that thin edge of the wedge for this amendment and you were a part of those decisions as well. Think about some of the other questions related to the potential residents. How are you going to mitigate property if greater density and parking needs exist? What's going to be done to mitigate the traffic on already cramped streets? We had discussed the need to turn those into one-way streets. How might the tunnel vision down Garrett Avenue be avoided, particularly in that end where they're going to be now have the opportunity to raise to thirty-five feet? What will be done to mitigate stormwater? Again, when we did the overlay district, we gave them exceptions to stormwater that no other place has in the township. Will the concessions provided by the existing overlay district be rescinded in exchange for outdoor dining and changes in the maximum height? Will all the outdoor dining provisions and regulations in the Garrett Lake, Garrett Hill overlay district now be consistent with those that exist in the rest of the township? Or as I heard, we may be having some free seats. How will provisions for appropriate scale be assured? I'd like you to contemplate what happens in Garrett Hill does not stay in Garrett Hill. The public good of the township rests in your hands. Unintended consequences need to be carefully weighed. The recent algorithmic reassessment of Delaware County has resulted in significant changes in taxation with communities that are being gentrified paying the higher price than other areas. While revenue is always a consideration, what is the price of vacant stores and lots? Some were once thriving residences and establishments were demolished. Businesses have been in Garrett Hill for decades. They change hands, but they continue to come and go. Use common sense and the common good as you read the petitions that implore you to make dreams become reality. Should individual variances be sought and modifications considered on a case-by-case basis? Rather than looking to amend an overlay district that has far more reaching implications? Do the signatures represent those who own property and will be directly impacted by the proposed changes? Finally, are such amendments consistent with a comprehensive land use plan and the vision promoted by the Delaware County Planning?
Ms. Winters, you have a little less than one minute.
Thank you for all your ongoing consideration of our unique, of our unique community. I hope we will be able to have face-to-face meetings after COVID and involve all of you as part of the discussions to answer your questions one-on-one. Thank you.
Jack, I, I, sorry, I, I, I have to respond to this. You know, the fact of whether they own or they rent and Roberta says she wants this to get vetted, well, there are people that rented that don't live anywhere near Garrett Hill telling other people what to do. That's just one of them. I could go head-to-head on all those questions.
But we understand, public comment is really for the public. I hear you.
Got it. I don't know if Angie Mitchell, the owner of Flip and Bailey's would like to speak, but I don't see her hand up. So there she is.
Ms. Mitchell?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Good evening. This is like watching, you know, a movie eating popcorn. You guys are, have your, your hands full tonight. So I'm, I'm Angie Mitchell. My husband and I own Flip and Bailey's and the Garrett Hill Ale House. We are two restaurants and bars in this neighborhood of Garrett Hill. Everything you're talking about impacts deeply. I just wanted you to hear from a business owner that's impacted greatly. I've been before you many times this year trying to get the temporary dining permit, trying to convince that this is necessary for survival. And I'm, I'm here again trying to remind you, we're still here. There are six restaurants in Garrett Hill. There, we're, we're two of the only bars and restaurants. So our, our parameters and our operations are a little bit different than the other ones. There's two takeouts and there's two pizza delis. We're all very important to the structure and the, the neighborhood. I just, I, I kind of wish these two things weren't related because they're both very important, but I'm obviously more heavily involved on the thing that impacts me the most, but I just really urge as you discuss and as you consider these things, we need to find a way to compete and to survive. My Garrett Hill Ale House has my heart and soul and as of today, we've been closed for a year. Our seating capacity is sixty-six. I can't make it at twenty-five percent. I can't make it at fifty percent. I'm, I'm waiting every day. I have my, my chef on standby, just waiting for things to change. This would help if we could have seats. That is number one. Number two, I'm, I'm not really excited about the eight-seat limit. I don't think that's fair. For myself, I was required to buy barricades and come before commission and fight for the right to have any seats at all. So I think adding eight seats on a blanket to every restaurant when we're not on the same, we're talking about three thousand square feet versus two hundred square feet, some who don't even have a public bathroom. I just don't think it's fair playing field. And I really appreciate everybody from the community. Roberta, I, I know what you have done to, to build the community and I know it's important, but I do think we need to take this to the next level. We just need to be competitive and we need to be a neighborhood. That is what it's all about is bringing community together. And I don't really think in an organized setting, outside dining is a detriment to the community. I think it's a compliment. And I really hope you, you all just consider this coming from a business owner who, again, we're struggling as we are everybody. We just need to be on the same playing field as everyone else. Let me just make sure I had everything. I think that was it. I, I don't want to take anymore of your time. You had so much to deal with tonight, but I do appreciate you taking this into consideration and I would be open if, if anybody needs any answers or wants to discuss or even from the community to how we can work together to, to move forward.
Thank you. Ms. Pilling, you're up.
Derek Pilling, twenty-nine Garrett Avenue. I was not part of the Garrett Hill overlay process, although I did do research. And I would like to speak to the backstory of why outdoor dining was not permitted in Garrett Hill. We are, as everybody has noted, we are small houses, very close together. We predate commercial and residential zoning. My house was built in nineteen twenty. I have three feet on one side and five feet on the other, and I will comment on that later. We have a problem. We have an old street. It's a narrow street. There is no way to go in this day and age to go up the street without weaving from almost curb to curb in order to get through the street. The issue of why outdoor dining was not permitted was there was no place to put it except in existing parking spaces. That's the reason why, one of the main reasons why the Wild Onion sold it to become Flip and Bailey. Steve Bay just wanted to widen the building and take those six parking spaces on the side that were parking spaces, which incidentally is where the outdoor dining went at Flip and Bailey, which was fine. But it took six parking spaces for the Garrett Hill, the bar. They would have to take parking spaces or have it in the gravel between the parking spaces. And Dee Felice wants to do something. Yes, he wants to add parking at the back. But where would his dining go? His dining would go in former parking spaces. We do not have five-foot wide sidewalks. We have three feet wide sidewalks. So you, the regulation in Wayne is they have to be a certain distance from the sidewalk. You have to allow the pedestrians to traverse the area. And that was the main reason why outdoor dining was not originally allowed. Because parking is the biggest issue in Garrett Hill. Before COVID, where Garrett Avenue is the only street that has permit parking, not anything we asked for, but was imposed upon us by the township. But Williams Road has no. But Williams Road has no parking permits, and many nights, the cars would be parked down through the second block of Williams Road because there is no place to park. Now, at the end, what I'd like to go back to is this whole idea of rebuilding houses. Recently, as you know, we all were reassessed, and I appealed my reassessment before the assessment came out. If my house were torn down and it was not built to the original footprint, the new house could be nine feet wide because of the current zoning sideyard setbacks. So it's not necessarily unless these people want to tear down a house and build it to the original footprint. They're going to be in trouble because none of us are conforming to the new zoning setbacks either R five or the Garrett Hill zoning. The Garrett Hill neighborhood was very generous as to the sideyard setbacks, and it might be possible on the south side of the bridge, but it is not possible on the north side of the bridge. Thank you for listening.
So just want to make one clarification. Most of that dining is going to not be on the public.
Guys, I'm I'm sorry. Roberta's hand is up. I'm going to say, Roberta, I apologize. We can't have a back and forth, Sean. We can't have a back and forth like that. A public comment. Roberta, there will be another public comment for you to speak at. We're just, we're not going to go back and forth. Okay, I'm going to call the vote. All in favor of asking John Rice to craft a resolution for us, which we will at a later meeting discuss and vote on, and there will be yet another opportunity for feedback from members of the public. Say aye. Aye.
All opposed.
I agree. I thought we I thought we said it was a sense of the board. Wasn't it a sense of the board?
Oh, it it should be a a motion to authorize the preparation of a zoning amendment.
Then I would like to make a motion to authorize the zoning amendment.
I was actually raising my hand to but maybe it's too late now because we did the vote, but to take these separately. The height of the house and the outdoor dining, although related because it's the community, perhaps aren't intricately connected, but
I I agree.
I think we've already voted.
Commissioner Maruni, I agree with you, but it was presented as together. I I I too should have voiced my opinion on that from the beginning, and and I regret not doing so, but I agree with you, but it was presented as such as together. We've already had the motion in the vote. I I I would suggest that we move forward.
Sean made a motion, but there was no second. We need a second.
I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
You didn't need a second because we already voted, right?
I mean, before we already voted and then we didn't get to go back and allow public comment. John Rice says that we need a motion in a second here. I'm fine with that. Sean, you've motioned all second. Does anybody want to change their votes? Let's re-vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes six to one. Moving on, item three G, motion to direct the township solicitor to enter an appearance on behalf of the township in support of the zoning application filed or to be filed by Concordia Group regarding the property located at the corner of Eagle and Radnor Street Roads. This is my request. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
I will very briefly explain, and then I'm going to toss the ball to Dave Falcone, who I see is on the line, who represents the applicant. My reason for asking for this is that Concordia has proposed a development at that site, which I'm going to say has the support of a very large majority of residents in the area, which is not to minimize the concerns that some of the members of that majority have about the development or the concerns that some of the opponents of that majority have for that development. But nonetheless, there is a large majority that supports that particular development. What makes this development different from others that generally come before the board is that in order to move forward, it requires a zoning amendment from the board, which is within certain very, very broad confines, wholly discretionary with the Board of Commissioners. It is in our gift whether we choose to allow this to move forward or not. They have now been advised that they need to go to the zoning hearing board in order to get relief from steep slopes, which they contend are man-made and therefore would not ordinarily need relief from the zoning hearing board, perhaps from other issues. I'm going to let Dave speak to that. My interest is I want to ensure that this comes to us for a vote, and we make the decision one way or another based on the interests of the residents and not that we be constrained by the technicalities of our zoning ordinance, which would potentially put the residents of that area in a bad position if a applicant were to come in with a by right plan for the PI district in which the development is currently located. So to sum up, my interest is I want this to come to us. We give it an up or down vote because unlike usual, it is fully within our discretion, and we get to make the choice. I do not want the zoning hearing board to make the choice for us or for the residents in that area. And as a result, I would propose that we send our solicitor to argue on behalf of the applicant and voice the support of this board.
Dave, I'm gonna. Can I just make one comment?
Sure, please.
I'm not sure I need to argue on behalf of the applicant. I think what I would do is communicate to the zoning hearing board that the Board of Commissioners, assuming this motion gets approved, does not oppose this application and is in favor of the relief. I think Mr. Falcone is certainly able to argue his own case. But it's not unusual for a board, you know, to be in favor of a particular application or to be opposed to a particular application, which happened earlier tonight. So, you know, that's just to clarify that. I I, you know, my role, I see it as we're there in support, but Mr. Falcone will have the laboring ore throughout.
Yeah, I misspoke. I don't contemplate that you're going to be writing a brief joining with Concordia or anything. I just want to express our support.
Okay. Thank you.
Am I correct that this has the support thus far of Planning, Shade Tree, and the North Wayne Preservation Association? Is that correct, Mr. Larkin?
I know that Shade Tree is very enthusiastic about it. I think that Planning has recommended it, but I could be wrong about that. I'm going to defer to Steve and Dave on that. Steve, do you recall as Planning issued a recommendation?
We did. They did, sir, with the recommendation was with compliance with the various memos, note, and the rendering shown on the plan, adoption of the zoning ordinance, easy HP relief, amend the plan to show the pedestrian bridge at the location discussed with staff, as well as the sidewalk, all agency, all outside agency approvals for preliminary.
I know that the developer has met at least once, I think several times with the NWPA. I'm aware that many members of the NWPA have approached me in support of it. No one has ever told me that they, as a group, voted specifically to support this application.
That that was my my clarification on that. Thank you.
Misses, I could add in on the zoning hearing board application because this project would involve a land development that it would, the planning commission would be weighing in on the zoning hearing board application once one is filed.
Say that again, Kevin.
The the zoning code requires that anytime there is a zoning application from the zoning hearing board that would involve a land development, that that application is reviewed by the zoning hearing board, or I'm sorry, by the planning commission prior to going to.
Is Concordia going to go to Planning before they have the zoning hearing?
They would have to go to Planning for a review of the zoning hearing board application once a zoning hearing board application is filed.
Well, hasn't it already been filed?
No.
Okay.
Jack, do you do you want to make a do you want to put a motion out there?
I thought that I had. I'm sorry.
I thought you did.
Oh, did you? Okay, sorry.
All right, but so, Jack, Kevin said that they haven't filed an application for zoning hearing board yet.
Yeah, that's why I put it in the in the agenda as filed or to be filed by Concordia Group.
Okay.
They're here today. I'm pretty confident that they're anticipating filing that motion, filing that application.
All right. Well, I I would just say that the the neighbors, and my word is is right on the border here. I've heard from a few neighbors. I I haven't heard overwhelming support for facility, but I I I support Concordia Building. We do whatever they want with that. As long as it's permitted by the zoning, the the comments I've gotten and I agree with are that we should go back to the zoning that it was, which is R one, and that would be slightly fewer homes, but it would still be the same basic structure. And that's more consistent is to go back to what it was before. We have the zoning was R one, it changed to PI. Why not change it back to R one? So I I would support it for for R one, but I I don't I don't agree with the with the concept that R two is better for saving trees. I I don't, I think that the R one plan can save that many or more trees.
I will say that I have also heard that request that we move from PI to R one instead of R two, and while I completely understand it, it sounds good on its face. Why give them more than they're entitled to? I want to give the developer credit. They have offered to limit their design to just twenty homes on a twenty-acre lot, which while they would probably have maybe eighteen, seventeen, eighteen homes if it were zoned R one, they're certainly not taking the full thirty-five or thirty-eight that they might be able to squeeze onto an R two lot on the same amount of space. So they are not trying to pack ten pounds of whatever into a five-pound bag. Forgot that I was on online for a second there. The other point that I want to make is that there has been an application for a sixty-two-town home unit development immediately adjacent to this, to the north and to the east, I think, on Valley Forge's property, which is a special exception use on PI. I am very, very interested in preserving a plan which keeps density low in that area as opposed to promoting by right plans in the PI district, which I think would be extraordinarily dangerous for residence satisfaction, at least, if not extraordinarily dangerous for resident health and welfare in the existing eastern lot. So if in this case, the developer feels like in order to make the project work, they need those two additional homes, which is not the kind of ask that I would ordinarily expect from a developer. I'm used to hearing we need fifteen or twenty additional homes. If they need the additional two homes, I give that a lot of credence in this particular instance. But the bottom line here is I'm not asking the board to approve the development today. I'm asking the board to just make sure that it comes to us for an up or down vote at some point in the future. Dave, John said you were supposed to take the laboring ore, but I've been doing a lot of talking right now. Do you want to say anything?
Sure, I can just jump in a little bit, Jack. I appreciate that, and I appreciate everybody's comments. So in this specific instance, what we're looking for is a variance, and we will be submitting it. We were directed to do so by the zoning officer. We had submitted a preliminary request for zoning determination on the slopes. The slopes cut through the middle of the site, and they have been evaluated by the township in some respects, as well as as part of our application for determination. They've been evaluated by your zoning officer, who's also looked at the files, is really what I should say. And the fact is, these slopes predate any ordinance that the township has enacted. And the township's ordinance requires that unless the slopes are made in conformance with a designated section of the code, that you must go get relief in order to disturb them. The intent of that provision is to allow slopes that were made as as part of a grading permit, man-made slopes that came through the township's application process to be allowed to be excluded from that zoning hearing board or that zoning provision. In this instance, we simply predate that provision of the code. Had that provision existed when these slopes were created, they would have fallen within it, and these slopes would have been excluded then from the the requirements of the code. So we are we are relatively certain, and we believe that staff is also relatively certain these slopes were man-made. They were part of the construction of a large parking lot on this site, as well as fourteen homes, and they are very, very typical of that type of construction in their location and in their design. And what we're looking to do is to disturb those slopes for purposes of this development. It's also important to note that the provisions of the zoning hearing or the zoning ordinance specifically talk about steep slopes not being disturbed for purposes of preserving stormwater quality, stormwater management, and letting those natural conditions remain. This property is specifically unmitigated with respect to stormwater. These slopes that were man-made are not are not protected. They aren't controlled, and as part of our development, we are planning to over-control this site. We are planning to put in less impervious cover than there is today. When our application is complete, it should receive approval. It would have less impervious cover. And as part of that plan, you know, we need to disturb these slopes. And this type of disturbance, specifically to Commissioner Booker's comment, would be necessary for any development of this site, whether it be R one, R one A, or R two. We would be in seeking relief to disturb these very specific man-made slopes with the understanding that your ordinance does not permit man-made slopes as an immediate exclusion. I think Commissioner Booker has made that point in the past, and he is correct. The ordinance itself does not give us relief where the slopes are man-made, but it's specific to say that they are really the product of a permit or a granted application through the township. And again, we predate that. So that's the relief we're seeking. This has nothing to do with the overall zoning amendment, nor does it really have anything to do with this land development plan, which is on its way to the Board of Commissioners for preliminary review. This, again, would just be necessary really for any development of this site. And that's why that's why we're seeking it, just to allow this project to move forward in some form. I do have I do have my consultant with me. There's any questions for them specifically. I have my engineer, and I also have the equitable owners of the property, but that is a summation of this application. Again, it's it's distinct from the MAP amendment request as well as from the preliminary land development plan, which came through planning and was recommended unanimously to to your board.
Hearing no commissioner questions? Is there any staff comment? Public comment, Mr. Nagel.
Yes, my name's George Nagel. I'm a neighbor. I just wanted to respond to Mr. Larkin's comment about the substantial support. I've had many conversations with neighbors, and I would say the opposite. There's substantial opposition to this plan as currently exists. There does seem to be support for a development with R one zoning, and I understand that's that's not at issue tonight. But there there, I just want to make it clear that there is neighbor opposition. I have no knowledge of the North Wayne Protective Association approving this in any manner. I was on one call with that group, and and there were many neighbors who who opposed the plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we have one more. Matt Marshall, you're up.
Matt, you're on mute.
Matt Marshall.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yes, okay. This is Matt Marshall, two-two-eight Walnut Avenue. For those commissioners who are not aware of the history of this redevelopment, I just I just want to give you some context because I think had this size and scale of development happen in any other ward, we would be taking a much slower response, and we would not be acting as quickly, particularly as it relates to the solicitor going before the zoning board. Let me give you some context. The eastern lot is plus or minus twenty acres. The eastern lot is plus or minus 20 acres. 20 acres is a significant portion of North Wayne. In comparison, if you look at the entire land area of the Radnor Middle School, that's 11.8 acres. It's a little more than half of this site. This process began in earnest, I believe in February 2020, I was asked to come to a meeting as a close in neighbor. That was a little less than a year ago. And today on March the 8th, 2021, we're talking about sending the solicitor to the zoning board for relief. The scale of this project requires and demands of the commissioners more insight. We're talking about an area that will never be P I zoned again. This is going to be a it's going to be a subdivision. It's going to be housing. I'm sure it's going to be very nice, attractive homes. But when this started a year ago, I had suggested that both the developer Concordia Group and Attorney Falcone present before Community Development Subcommittee. Now, why would you do that? Because that would be the first step in the process for any site in Radnor Township of this scale. And as far as I could tell through email correspondence, they decided that was not the path to take. The path to take was to go to the Planning Commission where last Monday they got a preliminary approval for this plan. This R one zoning is essentially what the neighbors have told me they want, and I'm a half a block from this entrance, you know, to this development. So I should I should be able to tell you by scale there is no overwhelming support for more density. I think what's happened in the communication that I've heard as recently as tonight is that there's some, you know, phantom 63 unit project that could be coming behind this and we better be careful because if Concordia doesn't get their approval, then you know, this other developer will. I've never seen anything like this in my 20 years of following planning in the township. It's going out of process. I am not against having the developer get zoning relief for R one, but that should be discussed throughout community development and it should be planning commission and it should go to the zoning commission and then to the commissioners. We've skipped the initial step and nobody can explain why. Nobody on this board has ever mentioned, including Ms. Maroni and Mr. Larkin and Mr. Booker, why did this not go to Community Development Subcommittee? Eli Khan gave us all kinds of concessions when he came before the Subcommittee in July. We got long term parking leases and we got less density. And all I'm seeing is blank faces. I don't know why, you know, why is this question that I brought up three or four times never been addressed? And I'll just go on. Lastly, to make this point. You know, this, this, this development, it really shouldn't be dictating the terms of how the process is waged in Radnor Township. This is a significant land area. We're getting hopefully getting relief for the developer to go from P I zoning to R one zoning. Why do we have a process that's been rushed in my mind for less than a year to give accommodation for this developer? That's never happened as long as I've been paying attention and I guarantee you, if it was any other ward, people would be asking the same question, you know, from your constituents, Commissioner. So thank you for listening to that. I think somebody has to address the issue. Why was this not brought before Community Development Subcommittee? Thank you.
Great. Seeing no additional public comment. Nope, here's one more. Ms. Kraus Blackney.
Hi, thank you. I just want to affirm everything that Matt and George said. And just, you know, ask a question about the slips. I think it's very easy to say, oh, they were manmade. And I really would like to dig a little deeper into that and see how we actually that. My understanding is precedence is not to disturb slopes. If that's the ordinance, so I'd like to make a request that we try to find some way to document whether they were manmade or not. Thank you very much.
Just for clarification, Commissioner Larkin, I did call for this to be before the community, some of the Community Development Subcommittee and it was not agreed to have a meeting, so.
That's right, Rich. You wanted to do it in person during the COVID-19 shutdown and no one else was willing to do that.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna second that. Rich, we were willing to have a meeting virtually and you wanted it in person during a pandemic. So just to be clear on the record, willing to have the meeting chair, but you refused to do it safely.
We had a lot of in-person meetings during the pandemic.
We had one when we were in a different phase.
And we had many of regular Board of Commissioners meeting. However,
We were in a different phase.
I'm ready, I'm ready to bring it before Community Development anytime that this board that you both will can do it.
Community Development is now the board of the whole, Rich. All in favor? Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, do you mind if I just ask one question?
Please.
So, you know, we are, you're asking us to vote on this and they haven't filed an application yet. Is there a way that we, you know, wait until we see what the application is or we already know what that's going to be? Like you already have a good sense of it. I guess I feel like, you know, I feel like we've heard some very, you know, conflicting information from the residents. So I'm I'm just wondering, do we, do we wait until we really have something solid to look at and go on? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, we have pretty good information about what their application is going to say. They're, they're told that they need to they need to get a variance in order to build on steep slopes, which they claim are manmade and which we just don't have the evidence of that. They're going to have to present their case or not. I'm comfortable voting on that now, but honestly, this isn't my development. And if the larger if the larger P I facility is built on that property, my house is not adjacent to it. So while I think that it's an error for the residents, that's, that's ultimately their choice. If there's a motion to table, I don't object. I just don't want to come back and do the same presentation like six different times.
And to the boards, to the boards, we do have plans and we do have pictures available that we can show that were submitted to the zoning officer. I also think you can you can seek comment from the zoning officer and from Mr. Norsini as to their belief as to the existence of the slopes and their age. And whether they they find them to be manmade in their experience. We welcome that discussion, but we're happy to show as much information as the board would like to see. Again, we are relatively certain. There is no doubt these, these slopes are manmade. It simply comes down to what your ordinance says. And if these slopes were created after the ordinance was was enacted, they would be excluded from the provisions of the ordinance. That's undisputed. It's the age of the slopes and they date back to the 1940s and the early 1950s, which is, you know, when the homes were created. So it's just about, it's about their age. And frankly, the ordinance just is not it's not entirely clear. When you read it, it kicks it to another provision and simply says if the slopes that exist were created in accordance with this provision of the ordinance, then they're exempted, but doesn't speak to what happens if they predated. And if there's evidence that they were created essentially within the parameters of that section. So there's, there's ambiguity, but again, we are confident that they're manmade and that the intent of the ordinance is very specifically to preserve natural slopes, but to make sure that manmade slopes can be fixed. And it's really for purposes of stormwater. And the way that the runoff is generated when you have slopes that are disturbed and to make sure that the impact is mitigated. And that's what we're able to do with this development. So from a stormwater perspective, this application makes this site better. That's there's no question there. And I absolutely, I absolutely think, you know, we have heard from some residents that they would prefer to see it with a couple of lots less. And that's really where we're talking on density. And I think Commissioner Booker made a good point to that. You know, we're talking the difference between R one and R two, which is probably two units. It's meaningful to this developer and because of that, and you'll hear all these things when we come through with the land development process, but because of that, they've made accommodations on the plan. And those accommodations involve designing the project to R one standards for impervious. Limiting the number of lots that can be created on the, on the plan so that it really doesn't speak to that R two zoning. But those are ultimately things you as a board will make the final call on. There's no doubt about that. This very specific issue goes outside of your purview. It goes to the zoning hearing board. And again, there's really not a whole lot that can happen here in a safe development that kind of preserves this property without disturbing these slopes. And so that's, that's why we're seeking this relief. You know, we did make the argument to the zoning, zoning officer that, you know, they were manmade. And again, it's just not in the ordinance that provides that type of relief. So that's why we're here.
So Lisa, to answer your question, that's all the zoning hearing board application is. It's just about, you know, Kevin is the zoning officer, couldn't confirm one way or another. There's some ambiguity. And that's what the zoning hearing board is for. So that was a decision that was made out of a, you know, abundance of caution that they get relief and the zoning hearing board may find out that they don't need any. But that's where that gets played out. And, you know, that's why the application is proceeding. There's nothing else other than that going to the zoning hearing board.
So good. I think Commissioner, listen, I think Commissioner Browski makes the good point, though. Until we see what is actually in the application, why don't we table this and make sure that we're comfortable with it? And that the board votes on knowing what it's actually voting not to oppose. Sorry, Lisa.
That, that's all right. So I guess my only other, my only other question is, so this is only about a ruling on the steep slopes issue, manmade or non-manmade. And then after that, when it comes to the R two zoning, which the R two, R one seems to be an issue and a concern, that ultimately ends up being in the hands of the commissioners, correct? And Jack, that is basically what you're saying.
That's correct.
Okay, so and we can decide whether we want it to be that or not. And I will share, I have seen the plan. The plan did come through Shade Tree. It was very favorably received at Shade Tree, if I recall correctly. Mr. Norsini can correct me if I'm wrong. You know, I, so I guess, you know, my concern is, is just making sure like for us as a board, you know, this is the first time many of us are hearing us. There was no neighbors, no, I don't recall any neighbors coming and speaking at Shade Tree regarding this. I did not watch planning to see if planning did, you know, if any neighbors came. You know, I, I would like there, I would like to hear maybe a little more from the neighbors, but will we have that opportunity when it comes to us for R two, R one?
Absolutely, Lisa. So this whole process will play out in front of you in two different facets. One, it's going to come to you for land development. And then two, there's going to be a separate hearing for a map change that deals specifically and exclusively exclusively with the zoning designation. So you will have two different opportunities to speak to and ultimately rule on both of those options. Land development as one and then separately in a hearing for a map change dealing with the zoning. That will be, and zoning, as you know, is completely discretionary with the Board of Commissioners.
That's why I know everything about it. I learned something new.
I guess my question then is for the motion that we are entertaining would be sending the solicitor to enter an appearance on behalf of the township to support the zoning application. If we were not to send the solicitor, the zoning process is going to move forward on its own mechanisms, and then it would come to us on land development. Is that right?
Provided that it obtained the relief at the zoning hearing board.
So I guess what is I'm asking?
Yeah, I'm not sure I see. Yeah, and I'm not sure I see the need for the motion that's on the table, but.
Yes, Jack, can you speak to that? What's the, what's the importance of sending the the solicitor as opposed to allowing them just to move into the zoning application process without?
Sure, it's no different than the process of sending the solicitor to oppose the zoning application that we did previously. We are expressing our lack of support. On one side, here we are expressing our support. Theoretically, if you believe that the zoning hearing board always gets every answer correct without engaging in the adversarial process, you just have the applicant, they show up, the zoning hearing board calls balls and strikes, then I tell you that our participation is not necessary. In reality, it's generally speaking been my experience as I believe it's been Rich's, which is why he wanted to send Mr. Rice to the zoning hearing board on the pen medicine issue. You get better results or at least results that conform to what you are looking for if you participate in the process. Here, I have some concerns about the alternative developments that could be going there. And I have some real excitement about the stormwater solutions that they're providing, so I want to support them.
Thank you. That made it much more.
Thank you very much. That makes it clear.
Okay. My, my only issue is we haven't, we don't know, we haven't seen what they're going to file. And when are they going, March 18th?
April.
April. So we have another meeting. You know, why not table? So we make sure we understand what, what they're submitting to zoning. And I thought we were going to not oppose, right? Rather than support, right? John, that's what you said, not oppose.
Well, I think we're going to support, but not argue in favor of. I, look, there's a, there's a, there's a middle ground here. It's just authorize me or the staff or to send a letter to the zoning hearing board saying that the board is in favor of the application and supports the application. And that's generally all I'm going to do if I show up in person is say that. You know, that the board's in support of it. That would be the reason to take any action on this. But it's up to the board. If you want you know, an in-person support, that's fine. I've done it both ways. You can send a letter of support. I think it carries the same weight with the zoning hearing board, but it's up to the board. How you want to do it.
I haven't heard a motion to table yet, so I'm going to call the.
I'll move the table.
Okay, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it. I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion fails for lack of a majority. I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes five to two. Thank you all. I appreciate it. Moving to
Thank you all.
Resolution number 2021 dash 31, the censure of Commissioner Jake Abel. Is there a motion?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Sean, this is yours.
Yeah, so this is not anything that I wanted to do, but Commissioner Abel, all I want is a transparency that you're so adamant about. I'll say when I first got on board, I was far from perfect, especially when it came to handling criticism. But that was well before a court decision and that was in my first couple of months and you've been on the board for, for gone on three years. All I'm asking is that you unblock anyone that you blocked on your Twitter account, which you use to disseminate government information. It's in the resolution, anything from active shooters to snow to dangerous events to posting polls, et cetera. And just you know, unblock those people, unblock myself and hit the reset button. We can move on and I'm happy to drop this and we can go to, you know, we could go to old business, but if not, and I guess you've maybe gone, gone away from your screen. That's fine. That's fine. But if I don't, if you don't want to do that, I will seek a censure. I don't know, but it's the will of the board to do so. If that is not the case, where if I get, if we can get a censure, that's fine. We can move on. If not, then I think that we need to look at legal avenues of blocking other commissioners and other residents because it sends a very, very, very bad message to the residents. message to the residents and you know, and, and it's, it's your Twitter account is used for, it's got a word six handle. It's used to disseminate government information. It is an extension of you being a commissioner. So it's no different than, than anything than a Facebook account or anything. So I just think it's in the best, you know, the best for the township, best for transparency and good governance that anyone there is unblocked. And that's all I'm asking. So I'll ask you, Commissioner Abel, right now, if you'd want to unblock the people that you've blocked and we can move on. Okay.
So this is the first I've heard any resident being blocked. And if somebody is blocked, they can reach out to me and I'll have my team look at it. But I'm not aware of specific people being blocked.
Well, I'm, I'm blocked right here. And I don't know if you've blocked anybody else. So if you can unblock me.
Yep. Well, I mean.
You can unblock me, we can move on, Jake.
And, and folks, folks have my, I've been advised to have you, to have you remain blocked because of previous threats. You've been reportedly taking pictures of me as I walk around rooms. So for safety concerns, I've been advised.
And you've taken pictures of me on the dais without a mask on, Jake. What's your point?
I, I have not.
I mean, what's your point?
I've not taken any pictures of you.
Who are these? You, you didn't, you didn't take a picture of me saying something of.
Point of order, point of order.
Yeah. And I know, Jake, you have.
Yeah, I'm going to recognize the point of order, which shockingly for us is being used correctly in this instance. Let's all take our terms.
All right. But sorry, Commissioner, we can finish.
I think it needs to be, sorry, just to the, to Commissioner Booker's point of order, may I add? I think it needs to be presented and voted or, you know, and called for discussion. But Sean, it sounds to me like you're trying to broker an agreement rather than vote on the censure. So if we could just reframe it.
Yeah. So let me, let me, let me speak to that. I, I don't want to censure anybody. I, I don't think that, but I think that you do need to do this in a, in a forum, in a live forum. And so it's transparent, which is exactly, that's all that I'm asking. I'm happy to move on. I don't want to censure anybody. I don't want to have to say this isn't right. I don't want to have to. And I don't think this board or this community or the township have to deal with this in the future. You know, I just want to, you know, just move forward with it. That's it. And, and that's it. I don't want, I don't want that. But if Commissioner Abel does not want to unblock me or anybody else, that's fine. You know, that's, that's, you know, then, then there are other avenues that I have. It's a simple request. This could be ended in all of three seconds.
Okay. I have two issues with this censure motion. First, I find the case in which it relies inapposite to the present scenario because in Knight versus Knight First Amendment Institute versus Donald J. Trump, Judge Parker, who was writing for the Second Circuit, circuit, which I know parenthetically does not sit in Pennsylvania, carefully limited the decision of that court to instances in which a public official excludes members of the public on the basis of viewpoint discrimination from a social media account maintained. And this was the key issue for the court maintained for official purposes. Second Circuit concluded that the former president's Twitter account was indeed used for official purposes based on the totality of the circumstances test, which included the president's admission that the account was official, the National Archives' conclusion that the president's tweets are official records. And the statement by the former press secretary Sean Spicer that the former president's tweets should be considered, quote, "official statements by the President of the United States." The court also noted that the account was curated in part by the then White House Director of Social Media and Assistant to the President, and was not therefore purely private. Finally, the court noted that the account was used to actually execute policy, including the nomination of an FBI director, the announcement of the former chief of staff's termination, and the hiring of that chief's replacement. From my review prior to tonight's meeting, Commissioner Abel's Twitter feed seems to focus on U.S. national political issues, Middle Eastern politics, and Radnor's trash collection. The account is not sponsored by the township and is not run in part or in whole by township employees. Either he or anyone acting on his or the township's behalf have claimed the account is used for official purposes. I'm also not sanguine that the Third Circuit, the circuit in which Radnor actually is located, would reach the same conclusion that the Second Circuit did in this instance, given the counterbalancing considerations articulated by Judge Parker in his opinion. In short, Knight First Amendment does not apply to this motion. Second, and perhaps more importantly, I am unwilling to reopen the cycle of tit for tat accusations and pointless censure motions that this board wisely put to bed under Lisa Barowski's tenure as president and which I, as a result, have largely, although obviously not completely, not had to slog through while running our meetings. While I reserve the option in the future to vote to censure a commissioner for abuse of his or her role in such a way as to prejudice the township, I have zero interest in censuring one commissioner over blocking another commissioner on Twitter. This dispute is childish. I also would like to move on from it. Now, Sean, I am finished.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Larkin. No, so it goes beyond, it goes beyond trash collection and Middle East policy. It goes on about public safety, including an active shooter. It goes on to talk about polls about young lungs. He even asked other commissioners about why they voted for something. So when you pose questions, rhetorical questions, and you can't get an answer, that's something else. It, it's a bad precedent. I, I get it. You don't want to do it. That's fine. But like I said, this is, uh, this was done by a federal court. This is a federal court. This is, may not be, and it may not be in Pennsylvania, but there's cases all over. It sets a very, very bad precedent. It's bad behavior. That's all I'm saying. And for some of that ran on transparency, I, I, I think it's, uh, it's a it's a sense of terrible message. That's all. Four can do what it wants to do. But I think it's, it's bad behavior.
So since Commissioner Larkin mentioned me, so I, you know, I can't even count how many times censure has come up since I've been on this board to censure Commissioner Farhi, Commissioner Nagel, Commissioner Clark. I mean, I can't even remember. I mean, there's so many, it, it kind of boggles my mind. When I first was on this board, I had to sit on the Ethics Board, the now disbanded Ethics Board, and cast a vote about, you know, another case that had been filed against another commissioner, Commissioner Booker. You know, in that moment, I decided to abstain from that vote, which made it a three-three or two-two, I can't even remember, vote not to move forward. And all of that mainly because I did feel like, you know, we, we as commissioners shouldn't be sitting in judgment on behavior of other commissioners. You know, we have, we were elected to do the business of the township, not to say how one should behave and the other shouldn't. I believe that's up to the voters of the ward that that commissioner represents. If they think that that behavior is acceptable, then obviously that individual.
Or perhaps up to the courts.
Or, well, so I did take a look and, and I, Commissioner Farhi, I told you this at my well-worn charter. I've looked at it so much. I have things highlighted, things underlined. It has kind of fallen apart because I've looked at it so much. And, you know, I believe that if we were going to use censure, that it should be something related to specifically violation of the, the Radnor Charter. Commissioner Farhi, I know you're going to say that it's a violation of the Constitution.
Yes, it is.
I don't, I don't know that that is, I don't know that that's the case with this. But, you know, I will not be voting to support this mainly because of, you know, my position on not, not being responsible for the behavior of other commissioners. I can only be responsible for my own behavior. And I will, I'm sorry, I will not, I will not be supporting this. And then I will hope that we can move on because I feel like we've gotten past a lot of this over the many years. So it's, it's kind of, I feel like we're right back maybe where we started.
Sure. But we do take an oath when we, when we get sworn in, we do take an oath on the Constitution. Part of that Constitution is the First Amendment, which is freedom of speech, and that's a violation. Just want to bring that up. Thank you, then.
I, I agree with Commissioner Larkin. This is not an appropriate issue. Just reach out and, and make the phone call. And if we, we could do a deal tonight, we could have done a deal and phone call long before tonight. So I'm going to oppose this motion.
This seems hypocritical when, you know, other commissioners say stuff that you, you know, they get, they get put up on censure. So Commissioner Booker, you know, if I called a someone that was, that was going to be the solicitor, basically questioned his ethics, I get charged for censure. That's okay. But a violation of the Constitution and free speech isn't. I just see that as a huge, just, just being hypocritical. That's all I said.
That's not okay. I, I want to stress, I do not think that that is okay, Shafari. I, I didn't vote to censure you before.
You weren't on the board. You weren't on the board then.
That is true, but I have been on the board for other censure motions directed against other commissioners, including you, and I have never voted for one.
Okay.
And I don't think any of them have passed. We haven't censured anyone since I've been on the board. And I do not want to get into the habit of doing so over nonsense.
Okay. Well, I don't think this is nonsense. I think this is a violation of, of my civil liberties and the First Amendment. I'll just say that. Regardless of if I'm a sitting commissioner or a citizen, relevant.
I'm going to choose not to.
And who knows who else he's blocking.
So I, I, you know, I think that tonight is probably not the night to go into a constitutional law lesson. I think that Jack spoke pretty eloquently about, obviously had done his research in the application of the case that is noted in the resolution does not apply to this situation. I don't think that we can censure each other unless that, unless we have violated something that has been agreed upon, whether it's the, you know, a code or our bylaws or, you know, and we don't have anything about communicating on social media. So. So if that were something that we wanted to address, I think that we should, as a group, come to some agreement about what the, you know, sort of what the parameters are on that. And I've written social media policies before. I don't think that it's probably something we do want to engage in. But I think unless you have that, unless you have a distinct violation of something that we have all agreed to, either by, you know, swearing our oath. I know that you're saying that we've sworn it to the Constitution. I just don't think you're applying that correctly. So I will also not vote to censure. I just don't, I don't like this pattern, you know, that I haven't been on the board for another censure. But I can imagine that it would perhaps open up sort of personal vendetta and, you know, political backstabbing that I think we should try to rise above.
I'm going to assume that there is no staff comment on this. I'm going to go to public comment. Mr. Sherry.
Some comments about this. Mr. Farhi, to your resolution. I would not, had I the ability to cast the vote, be in favor of the resolution, but it is not for the rationales that are being thrown at you by Mr. Larkin, among others up on the board. The fact that we have not gone through with a successful censure in the past is not a reason to deny a censure motion. Just isn't. There can be a meritorious censure motion, and there can be passed bad refusals by the board in denying a censure motion. By way of example, John Nagle publicly exclaiming in a federal sentencing hearing that Phil R. was being treated so very unfairly, I would argue should have passed in terms of censuring. It's not necessarily a constitutional violation, but it certainly could be considered a violation of Radnor's Code and Charter that mandates the commissioners act above reproach. No, the reason why I don't think a censure motion is appropriate for Jake Abel is that there hasn't been any demonstration that what he's done is the type of outrageous, clear conduct that would mandate censorship by the board. But in so doing, you ought not be persuaded just because Larkin thinks that a Second Circuit opinion shouldn't control Pennsylvania. You're not a federal district court. You can rely on any persuasive authority that you think is valid, including Second Circuit opinions, if you wish. Because you're not a court. You're the Radnor Board of Commissioners. So Jack Larkin saying Second Circuit doesn't apply to Pennsylvania. Well, that's only relevant if you are in fact a court and you are not. So that's not a reason to vote it down. It is because having a Twitter handle and not having people necessarily able to view things or see things is not at this point in time so outrageous as to mandate a board censor. In fact, it might be appropriate policy based on the specifics of a situation. Rather than framing this in a motion for censure, if you are looking to have more clear Radnor Township policy as to social media, you should do that in terms of an agenda topic. I think that might be beneficial. But do not, in the future, be dissuaded from bringing what you feel are meritorious censor actions. And again, I would contend to you that this was not one of them merely by the fact that there might be political backlash. That's not a reason not to bring a motion for censure. I expect you and all commissioners to bring forth motions to censure if you see conduct as relating to board members that you feel is outrageous. That includes, again, John Nagel's remarks, which is why it was so appalling tonight to see members of the board, not you, but other members, despite all of that, not only not censure him, but to put him back into power. So yes, please rely on what you think is right in the moment and evaluate it in that moment. Don't concern yourself with whether people in the past voted for or against censorship. To actually get in front of the public tonight and say, well, I have a history of opposing censorship. That's not a basis to deny your motion. To deny your motion is because they don't think that your motion in and of itself has merit. And I would state again that if the board has decided in the past to deny motions to censure that, in my opinion, were meritorious, can make it embarrassing when they consider other motions. But that is not in and of itself the reason to deny the motion. It's the merits of the motion that should control. So while I think a discussion about board social media policy is warranted, I don't think this was the appropriate venue to do so. But please don't be dissuaded in the future from bringing forth these types of motions merely because somebody named Jack Larkin thinks that the Second Circuit should have no bearing on Radnor Township decides to consider or not consider in terms of a motion to censure. That doesn't control, nor does it that, oh, well, if we do this, maybe other people will do it back to us. That's not a reason to bring or refrain from bringing a motion to censure. It's the conduct. And again, here, don't think there's anything that Jake Abel is implied to have done that would rise to that type of indefensible outrageous conduct that would necessitate a motion to censure being placed on the agenda. Thank you, sir.
Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Aye.
Motion fails five to two. Five, four to two with Jake. Did you abstain? Okay, motion fails four to two. Moving to item four, reports of standing committees. Do we have any reports? Hearing none. Do we have any new business?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. And I know the chief isn't here. What's the outcome of what happened with the Villanova, the assault, I know that they had two actors that they, I think they've known about. Bill, do you know if there were any arrests made on them?
I do not know. Yeah, I mean, to the extent any of that's public information, we can let you know. Otherwise, I'm not even sure that Villanova has, has to tell us.
So then I'll have to tell you if there's been an arrest made?
Uh, no.
So there can be a rape. So there could be a rape, uh, accused, potentially accused rapist walking around a neighborhood somewhere.
I don't want to get into the possible scenarios. The MO, you've got that set up first.
Yeah, we don't have to. You said enough. Thanks.
According to news reports, at least one individual has been removed from campus.
Yeah, and that's scary because we don't know who he is or where he is. He's could be in a neighborhood somewhere here or New Jersey or wherever. It's just that.
Yeah, you're not going to until the DA's office determines whether or not they're filing charges. That's what I heard. Yeah, on the news. That's it.
So the charges are filed by the police. They would be available at the docket website. I don't know the name of the person. If you do know the name of the person, you can look it up, look them up on the docket website. Until then, that's, you know, all that we know. Do we have any old business? Twenty twenty-one real estate tax discussion from the February twenty-two, twenty twenty-one meeting.
Yeah, we had, um, my notes, uh, said that we concluded that meeting with a follow-up on answering the question of, or some sort of public reconciliation of how the township arrived at revenue neutral with the new assessment, yet many Radnor residents are seeing an increase in their real estate tax bills. We've updated the website with a couple additional notes on that. Uh, I'll let, uh, I know it's late, so we'll, we'll make this dis- discussion as, as quick as we can and leave it open to questions. Um, but Bob, if you wouldn't mind, just, just two, two minutes, uh, with an update on what we've done since the last meeting to try to help get the word out on that. You're muted.
Thank you. Can you hear me now? Um, so thank you. Yes, quick update. We, um, produced three public service announcements there between one and two-minute clips on the website that speak to, uh, number one, how are real estate taxes calculated? And explaining that there are three separate governing bodies, the township, the county, and the school district. And that all three are based on property value. So we tried to kind of lay the foundation and explain that. Number two was PSA speaking briefly about the, uh, the reassessment itself and the calculation of revenue neutral. And then three, we just gave an example of, um, just making up numbers, coming up with a homeowner whose property was previously valued at six hundred thousand dollars and then gave three scenarios where their property increased in, you know, three different levels and just showing the calculations. I think the important message here is that the, uh, millage rate is adjusted based on the overall average increase in assessments. And I do have one quick screen I'd just like to share that I think might, might lay it out and explain it. And if I could, I'll jump to this screen here. So if you can see on you, on your screen, I don't know if you can see the entire.
Yeah, yeah, reduce the zoom. There you go.
There you go. So just prior to the issuance of the reassessment by the county, the townships, Radnor Townships values, township-wide, all properties were roughly three-point-two billion. And immediately after the reassessment, the values were six-point-two-seven-two billion and ninety-three percent increase. Under the, under the prior to reassessment, our millage rate of four-point-four-zero-eight-two resulted in a tax revenue for the township of just over fourteen million dollars. Post reassessment, we had to back into the number. We know what the gross assessment is township-wide. We know how to calculate. So in order to do that, we back into a millage rate that produces a annual real estate tax revenue to the township at the same value as it was under the, under pre-assessment. So, and this is what we included in our PSA showing residents that uh, the calculation is just simply a, a mathematical equation to solve for what the tax millage should be after reassessment. And the difficulty here is that while the township in the aggregate increased by ninety-three percent, the, uh, individual homeowners, some were below that average. And of course, we're hearing many who are much higher than that average. Uh, that's not something township controls. It's, it's, that's a function of the county's determination of each individual property owner's uh, relative market value of their home. So since the township is only able to set one singular millage rate, we back into that number as an equation to produce the same annual tax revenue post-assessment as we had pre-assessment. And so the, the variable here is each individual's change in property value based upon this overall average of ninety-three percent. If you're below the average, you actually have a decrease in taxes. And if above the average, obviously, um, some people are seeing increases, significant increases in taxes. So we, we, we laid this out in a public service announcement, short video clips. And, um, hopefully that's helping to answer our, our residents' concerns.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Bob. Just, um, we've got the, we've got the, we've got the database that came from the county. So, uh, just, I mean, the number of residential houses that went up was just a little over fifty-one-hundred of our residents. Uh, the number of houses that, uh, saw an actual real estate tax decrease, just about twenty-seven-hundred. So, uh, you know, fifty-one-hundred saw a little bit of an increase. The average is about two-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars as it, as it is. Um, the average decrease, albeit for a smaller population of houses, uh, was about three-hundred-and-eight dollars. Um, on the commercial side, and this is part of the argument that we spent January talking about with the school district and the, the, um, the inequity in terms of the shift and the rise in residential and um, not so much on the commercial side, but on the commercial side, only a hundred and forty-three properties saw an increase while two-hundred-and-eighty saw a decrease. Um, so and we saw it on the aggregate numbers that, um, residential properties jumped by the ninety-three percent that Bob just showed. Um, and on the commercial side, they, they increased only a fifty percent. So, uh, that's why the, you know, the, the impact is being felt by the residents on that, um, uh, the, just the way that the reassessment worked out. So hopefully those PSAs, uh, get some traction and, and folks that have questions can get their, you know, watch those. They're one to two minutes long each. Um, they're quick little hits. So, uh, and then obviously we're, you know, uh, Amy and Bob and, uh, the treasurer are available uh, and are answering those questions as well. So hopefully this helps kind of bridge that gap and provide a little bit of a, a public explanation on what's going on with the math. Um, and we, we can answer any other questions.
Well, I brought up this issue and, and again, thank you very much, Bob and Bill, for putting this together. But what are the factors that caused one house in the, in a neighborhood to go up fifty percent? And another house in a neighborhood to go down ten percent?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's where, uh, the county assessors are going to have to answer that question. We, we, we are not privy to that type of information. We just get the data.
But wouldn't it be fair to say that at least in theory, the factors are going to be the value of your house and the aggregate change in the township? So if my house has increased in value substantially because when I bought it, it was under assessed and when they came through, it was increased in value to its market value, if that was a big change, then as long as my change was higher than the aggregate change in the township, I will see an increase in tax. But if my house was, let's say it's, uh, a new build and it was assessed at its fair market value fifteen minutes ago because it's brand new, the assessor will not change its value, which means that my home's millage, the actual taxes that I pay, the millage will be the same across the township, but my effective rate of tax will end up falling by half, more or less, because my assessed value was the same.
Yeah, uh, in the, but the, the problem is, is we just don't know why yours went up. Again, using the hypothetical, why yours would have gone up by X amount instead of Y amount or, you know, what the variations there are. Um, that's individual homeowners, uh, if they feel like, uh, their house is not representative of the market value, need to appeal.
Well, you, you said that one of the factors was the relative shift between value of commercial to residential.
I didn't hear that. That's what we saw in the aggregate numbers. I, I don't.
That doesn't affect.
Yeah, I.
So, so what are the other factors like the relative shift in value? Vis a vis the twenty-twenty assess reassessment versus two thousand? What are the other factors? Couldn't we have seen value shifted from the rest of the county to Radnor? And value shifted from old houses to, from new houses to old houses?
I'm not sure I understand.
You wouldn't have seen value shift from the rest of the county to Radnor necessarily, unless you're talking about the county taxes, which are distinct from Radnor's taxes and the school district taxes. Because we're only looking at, for Radnor Township's millage, we're only looking at within the geographic boundaries of the township.
No, I'm, I'm referring to value, relative value. So relative value in Radnor might have gone up more than another part of the county. So somebody, somebody else in the county. So remember, these are county assessors changing the values of every property in the county.
Yeah, well, that calculation definitely has some variation when you apply to the common level ratio of prior year's values. So if you take the twenty-twenty assessed value, apply the common level ratio and compare that to the twenty-twenty-one assessed value, uh, that's where the, the variation amongst the county could cause um, significant differences between what the assessors landed at and what you would have thought they would have landed at based on, you know, using the common level ratio. So, um, there, yeah, on that one, uh, when you would look at the county as a whole, then I could, I, I see where there'd be a lot of variation. But again, that's, uh, from the townships, from our seat in all of this. Um, that's, that's all it is, is speculation. We're, you know, it's a numbers, it's an analysis of numbers and uh, we don't really have a whole lot of the, um, you know, the discretionary decision-making, uh, input from the, the folks that actually came up with those numbers.
And the, and the other way it could have been is relative value of, uh, twenty-twenty versus two thousand, relative value of new homes were higher in prior assessments than they were to older homes. So older homes got more value in twenty-twenty relative to where they were in two thousand vis a vis newer homes.
Uh, yeah, I, I, again, I think each home is going to be its own set of unique circumstances. So, I mean, the, the other anecdotal, in all the discussions we've had about this, another anecdotal, uh, possibility is that commercial properties tend to turn over quicker or tend to, um, see improvements on a more regular basis, which would require the county through the interim assessments to keep their assessments closer to market value uh, versus a residential home where unless someone makes a significant improvement to the home, their assessed value does not change unless it's through some sort of countywide reassessment. So an argument could be made, again, this is all speculative, but an argument could be made that all along the commercial values were a little, the commercial side of the, the, uh, values were a little closer to actual market than the residential. So that's why the, the residential side saw a much larger swing. But again, I, I, we're, we can come up with a thousand possible scenarios.
So, so the bottom line, what I hear you, you and Bob saying, Bill, you and Bob are saying, no matter what your tax bill says, pay the same amount you paid last year, right?
No.
Oh.
What?
You almost got me at ten fifty-eight P M.
It's late, but no.
Yeah.
Yeah, come on, guys, come on.
If, if your reassessed value is ninety-three percent increase over your prior assessed value, then chances are you're going to be close, what you just said is close to accurate.
We have an example in the P, in, in the, one of the, the last PSA that does show that where the bill, your tax bill comes out exactly the same. So that might be rare.
I will say, few people who have contacted me about this have told me that they thought that their home was overvalued in the assessment. There may be a large contingent who just haven't complained to me about it, but most people have said, I'm paying more taxes and I don't understand why, or I'm paying more taxes and I just don't like it. But very few people have said the assessed value of my home is higher than I think I could actually get if I sold it.
Yeah, they, they should appeal.
Is that, and the appeal process is still open?
No, but you can appeal each year unless it's been extended. You can't appeal each year.
It's open for next year.
For next year. That's what I thought. Thank you.
For this year, it is closed though, I think.
Um, and then the other, the other variable again, which it, it doesn't impact us in terms of our decision-making or, but I mean, we, we're involved in the conversation is that the, whatever the school district lands on with their budget process has not, um, has not been billed at the new assessed value rates yet. So we've only seen the township and the county with their billings. Uh, the school district will be later this year.
But is it fair to say, understanding that we're not the school district and they will do whatever they choose to do at the end of the day, your increase or your decrease in township millage should estimate what your increase or decrease is with your school district taxes?
Uh, at revenue neutral, that should be correct because we have the same tax base.
I know that there are some carve-outs that we can apply and they're probably the same for them, but it should be the same base calculation.
Uh, move, we adjourn.
Yeah, hopefully.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Have a good night.